Good evening, everyone. This is a special meeting of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas. Today is February 2nd, 2023. We welcome you. Before I call the meeting to order, I want to announce that some commissioners, staff, and the public are attending remotely via Zoom, by phone, or on-site. All participants joining by phone should mute their phones when not speaking to avoid background noise. During the meeting, please make sure that you announce yourself by name and title every time you speak, so that the public that is observing knows who is speaking. This is critical, given the number of remote participants and its current guidance from the Kansas Attorney General's Office. I will now call this meeting to order. Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. You are hereby notified that a special meeting of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County in Kansas City, Kansas pursuant to rules of procedure 601 is to be conducted in a hybrid format in the commission chambers, lobby level of the office building, 701 North 7th Street, Kansas City, Kansas, on Thursday, on Thursday, February 2nd, 2023, at 6:00 PM regarding unified government rules and procedures. Roll call. Burrows.
Here.
Townsend.
Yeah.
McCurnan.
Here.
Ramirez.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kane.
Yeah.
Markley.
Here.
Stice.
Davis.
Here.
Bynum.
Here.
Garner.
Here. Thank you, Clerk. This evening, we have one item on the agenda. The item is under the Commissioner's agenda and is a discussion, a proposed change, or see in fact, government commissions, rules of procedures. I'll open the floor to the commission for discussion.
Mayor, I have a dysfunctional button, but I'll take it if that's okay. It didn't go off for some reason. Before us, in the packet, are red lines of the rule of procedure we've been discussing since December, and then additionally, in light of changes to the standing committees during the past week, or as of last Friday, some additional changes for consideration related to standing committee formatting and the changes allowed in the membership of those groups. They are in the packet. You can pull them up on your screen, certainly, and I'm available for any questions as our Commissioner Davis and Commissioner Ramirez.
Commissioner Bynum?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to state to the full commission that the item voted on last week to send back to standing committee for review and recommendation should be brought to Administration and Human Services on February 13th. That was the direction the commission gave at the meeting last week, and I believe that full agenda should be published tomorrow. So I just wanted to let the commission know that that item should be taken up as an agenda item at Administration and Human Services on the 13th. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
Thanks, Mayor. Can we put the language on the screen, just so the public and those that are watching are aware? Thank you all so much. I want to ask Chief Counsel just to provide some guidance here. So, Section 205 in this proposal, it does strike out H, and H states that the Neighborhood and Community Development Committee shall include at least one voting member from each of the other three standing committees. It is my understanding, Chief Counsel, that that is in the charter, and therefore, we would have to let that stand. Could you just provide some counsel on that?
Misty Brown, Chief Counsel for the Unified Government. Yes, Commissioner, that's true. When I received these red lines yesterday, I took a look at them. I did note that H is in the charter, and that would not be something that could be amended in this way. That would require a charter amendment if one was going to specify that those differences to Neighborhood and Community Development.
Awesome. So I would be perfectly fine with leaving that, or taking away that strikeout and leaving that language in there for a resolution for staff to bring back to us for the 7 o'clock commission meeting. But those are my comments. Thanks, Mayor.
Commissioner Bynum?
Thank you, Mayor. So 205H is not the one that's showing on the screen right now. Section 205H that you're referencing, right, Commissioner? States currently, the Neighborhood and Community Development Committee shall include at least one voting member from each of the other three standing committees. And so you are saying that, does that language also exist in the charter somewhere? Okay. And therefore, you wouldn't recommend this change. You would send that to the Charter Review Committee, or wherever you think we agree it should go. So meanwhile, because it creates a dilemma for us, as the way it stands, I had offered to the mayor to solve the current problem that we have by serving on Public Works and Safety, Administration and Human Services, which meet on the same night, as well as also becoming a member of Neighborhood and Community Development that meets on a different night, and that would put us in compliance with 205H, just for the record.
In that regard, I'm gonna have Dr. Edwards, could you come to the podium? I believe there was some questions that may have arisen out of how my office moved to get to the point of reassigning individuals, commissioners, to standing committees this year, and that really arose out of, and Dr. Edwards did a good job of recognizing that actually, we were operating out of compliance with our ordinance, and so that action was taken and recommended to me to take a corrective action, and I'll let Dr. Edwards speak to that.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. We did take a look at the ordinance to make certain that we were following the placement and the appointments to the standing committees as designated. And so, given that, and realizing that we weren't in compliance with regard to item H, the mayor then made the decision to take a look at reassigning those committees to make sure that we can bring them into order. We had conversations with both of our at-large commissioners to talk about the positives and negatives of doing that, and as Commissioner Bynum has noted, she did recommend that she take the bulk of the responsibility, rather than shifting all of the commissioners to having more meetings per month, that she be the representative that fulfills all of those. We proposed a recommendation to you all that would impact everyone equally, and I guess tonight, we're here to discuss that, or what else would you need from me to report on, how we arrived at that, and now that we are there, we know that that needs to be addressed. The mayor has spoken with me and is willing to let this be an item that is taken up by the chairs, not only the chairs of the committees that are designated by the ordinance, being the at-large commissioners, but their appointees, who were not addressed in this decision-making. So thinking about the four of them getting together and working with the remainder of the board to make recommendations through the administration committee, that is the recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. And that came about, and speaking with both Commissioner Burrows and Ms. Commissioner Bynum's, part of that was, is that we spoke to Chief Counsel about the actual chairs that had been appointed by the standing, the actual at-large commissioners, who are the actual chairs. And our concern was, and the concern with legal counsel, is that we may have erred in not involving both Commissioner Markley and Commissioner
McCurnan.
McCurnan in that discussion. Our belief was that because the policy was not being followed, and that we were operating out of compliance, that our only obligation was to talk to the actual chairs of the standing committee. And speaking with legal, that question was raised, and so in speaking with Ms. Bynum and Mr. Burrows, the commissioners, we agreed to allow them to bring us in compliance with ordinance by talking to the full commission and allowing the full commission to choose who they would like to serve on the standing committees, in a way that would bring the standing committees into full compliance with the current ordinance as it is written. And so that was my concession to the commission. Commissioner Bynum agreed to take that on and take that item and that action, and so that's how we arrived at this point, and I would sign off on that, and bless it, as I'm supposed to do as the mayor. Once the commission arrived at who they decided they would like to have on the various four standing committees. So Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. The point of, or at least it was my intention in working with the other commissioners to call this meeting, is to give staff direction to come back to full commission at 7 o'clock with legislation that we could have adopted tonight. Ms. Harrison Lee, what direction would you need, and how would you like to go about getting consensus from the governing body, so that you can direct staff to put something before us? And then I do have a question about the administrator's agenda as well, but I want to first give you that question.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the commission. Interim County Administrator Cheryl Harrison Lee. So as council indicated, we have the red line that was provided yesterday with the agenda, so I would want to know of the items you have here, which items you'd like us to look at and prepare for you for the 7 o'clock?
Okay. Should we do a straw vote, or what would be helpful, just so we can get things going?
So, let me make sure I understand what you have. With the items you have here, that are redlined, with the exception of item H, which I understand from council, needs a charter amendment, is the proposal to have this prepared?
For the 7 o'clock?
For the 7 o'clock. So, yeah, I would say, much like we've done with the budget presentations, when you've directed staff, kind of a straw?
Just a straw poll. So should we?
So that I understand what the will of the governing body is.
Okay. Would you like to just, should we do that now, or what would we?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. All of us that are in favor can raise our hands if we want this to go to full commission, or?
Misty.
Misty Brown, Chief Counsel for the Unified Government. My understanding, from what I'm hearing, is that you're going to ask for a straw poll to direct that changes to the rules of procedure be brought forward tonight. I have previously opined that, yes, the rules of procedures can be suspended, and various, you know, these are the rules of procedure for the commission, they can be suspended, and actions can be taken. And I've also previously opined and recommended that changes to the rules of procedure be done in a way to allow a meaningful review and drafting by the legal department. So if directed to do this tonight, I will do it, but I am gonna say on the record what my previous recommendation was.
Commissioner Markley?
Thanks, Mayor. I did get my button to work this time. I don't know what that was about. Can I first, I just want to clarify what Dr. Edwards and what the mayor brought forward tonight, because we're all sort of in standing committee limbo right now, and what I think I'm hearing is that the standing committee chairs, all four of us, are supposed to sit down and come up with a plan. I guess my question is, where does that put us? I think on Monday, there's a standing committee that I might have been assigned to, but maybe now I'm not. I guess what I'm hoping is that we're all gonna stay on our same standing committees until that recommendation comes forward.
That is correct. And apologies that that information gets out to you in a timely manner, but yes, there's nothing that has changed at this point until the chairs, all of four of you, get together and you make a determination on how best to assign individual commissioners to the standing committees at your choosing. The only ask that I have in helping me with that is that to make sure that we are in compliance with the current ordinance that we were out of compliance with for the entirety of 2022, as Dr. Edwards has stated, and moving forward, and then I will sign off on that and codify that to make it official.
Thanks, Mayor. And then in light of that, because we had an immediate problem we were trying to deal with that has been alleviated, and in light of Commissioner Bynum letting us know that the rules, rule that we were discussing previously from December is gonna go on the Administration and Human Services Standing Committee agenda, in light of Ms. Brown's comments, I guess I'm thinking perhaps we just send this whole package to that standing committee, since there isn't a timeliness issue to deal with the standing committee item tonight. That gives staff time to review. We'll put it all through the same process at one time through that standing committee agenda item. That would be my recommendation.
Is that a motion?
Can't make motion here.
Chief Counsel?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to add one other piece, is this is something that we have talked about, I think, up here and privately as well. Mayor, when I say privately, I want to be very clear for coma purposes, me, the mayor, and administrator, that there are numerous provisions in our rules of procedures that are conflicting, confusing, and need review. It's been 25 years since they've been looked at, and my assurances that I've received is that this is going to be a process that's going to be looked at. I would formally encourage a complete review of our rules of procedures to ensure that these conflicts and confusing points are addressed. So I just wanted to note that, and I think that's it.
Thank you, Chief Counsel, and I believe that Commissioner Burrows has taken up that task with a task force that is comprised of him chairing it, and numerous commissioners to look at the charter ordinances and all its resolutions, to make sure they reflect the values of our community today, and that they are in alliance without, or as many conflicts that we begin to identify. And so Commissioner Burrows has expressed here, and to me personally, that he is doing that in a very thoughtful and intentional manner, and that that work continues to be ongoing with several of the commissioners that are with us here tonight. So Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. My, well, let me ask this question. Chief Counsel, currently under our rules and procedure, the mayor has the ultimate authority over the agenda, meaning he can basically, this is true for both the commission and for standing committees. If the mayor changes his mind and says, I don't want any changes to the rules and procedure, I will not put it on the agenda for AHS, what does that mean for the resolution that was passed on January 26th?
Mr. Brown, Chief Counsel, what resolution, could you, I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank?
Yeah, yeah. The resolution that we all voted, the motion that we all made to direct conversations about the rules and procedure to administration and human services. If the mayor changes his mind and just says, I don't want to do that, what does it do to that resolution?
Because this matter was in front of the commission on the 26th, and because the commission as a whole voted to send this item back to Administration and Human Services, that matter must go to Administration and Human Services and be discussed. After that, there is a question that, yes, the mayor does control the agenda at the full commission meeting, and without a suspension to a rule of procedure at that time, it could be blocked from coming forward. It could come forward, and it could also be vetoed.
Okay. So I want my colleagues, again, to think about what we are doing. If we try to go through that process, number one, going through the charter review process, there's been a whole year to get one item before us, that just hasn't happened. But do we want to try with the county, a search for a county administrator happening as well? Do we want to try and go through that process as well, in addition to reviewing our rules and procedure? Or should we, as I proposed earlier, direct staff to draw up this language, formalizing in the resolution, and vote on it tonight, so we have some insurance going forward that this will not happen again? I would plead with my colleagues to take this language, and let's formalize it tonight, so that we can get some leverage here. Right now, all we have is the word, and words have been broken multiple times in the dais. Mayor? Mayor?
If we could, if we could call for it.
So, as I'm saying, I plead with my colleagues, let's not, I, there's a possibility that the mayor changes his mind, which means nothing progresses forward. Thank you.
But let me speak to that. Yes, if we could just control our signs, it's okay if you put them on the seats. That's at the request of our Chief Counsel. For those of you that don't know me, I've worked on the House and Authority Board, the Community College Board, the Ad-Hoc Group Against Crime, 32 years as a police officer, rising to the ranks, to deputy chief. So I was an employee here through Unified Government. I was also appointed by the governor of Kansas as a community organizer, CAT commissioner. I've had a lot of interactions with people in this community. My resume, my background speaks for itself. Let me speak frankly about the insinuation that I won't keep my word. That is a challenge to my integrity. If I say I'm going to do something, I do it, just like I have promised many of the people in this community that voted for me, that said they want to change, and I've kept my word. I have not backed down, and that's where I'm at. I've kept my word. So if I say it, I mean it. I said what I said, and I mean it, and that's a commitment, not to you, Commissioner Davis, but to this entire commission, to the staff, and to this community. My word has always been bond, and that's why people trust me. I just want to make it clear, Commissioner Davis, to you tonight, in front of everybody, for the record. There's a lot of rhetoric that has been going on, and I'd like to say for the record. If you read what was put out, that Dr. Edwards had talked about, there was an option there for you to contact me, my office, to call if there were any questions or concerns from any commissioners. I did get a response from Commissioner Johnson, who had some concerns, and last year, when we were making these standing committee assignments, several commissioners asked for changes and for preference on certain standing committees, including you, Commissioner Davis, and I honored that. As the mayor CEO of this town, I cannot ignore the fact that we have got, and I can't say this enough, I've said it all year. I started out this campaign with an olive branch to every commissioner, to staff, and to this community. This has never been about me. It will never be about me. I'm not here for me, because I don't have to be here. I'm here for the people. I'm here because I care about this community, and I want better. I'm sure this is all of you. And it hurts me to hear these types of things going on that continues to create a cloud over our community with misinformation, sometimes lies, not just about me, but several of us. So Commissioner Davis, you could have called and gotten clarity, and yes, I did set your commission, committee assignments to the side, because I expected, and that was my fault. I assumed that you would call, just like you did last year, and say, Mayor, I'd like to know what's going on with the community assignments. But what you've proved to me, what you've proven to me for most of the year is, is that you do not want to work or meet with me. And so that proved that once again, and instead of calling me and being a professional, and showing some level of professional maturity, what I got was a media blitz that caused a chaotic cloud to continue over this county. That was unnecessary. It was uncalled for, and accusations were thrown at me that are totally not true, that do not reflect the person I've been, who I am, or who I were, ever, will be. I've always been somebody that is a collaborator. And I say that respectfully to you, because throughout the year, I've offered you plenty of opportunities to meet with me. You have chosen not to. I've heard that you felt like your constituents, 20,000 of them, didn't have a voice. Well, some of those constituents voted for me, too. And if you're not working with me, you're depriving those constituents that we both have of leadership that is failing to work together in a way that can get the job of the people done. Throughout the year, you've admittedly scrutinized me. I don't know why. That's between you and God. Can we, can? Commissioners? Commissioner, I'm running this meeting. Commissioner, I'm gonna ask for order from everyone. Please, be respectful. So I say that respectfully, is that from day one, I have done nothing to you but show you love, offer you help, assistance in every way possible. And so what I did was to try and get you back to the table to say, let's talk, and let's find out how we can work together, because people have told me, Mayor, go above and beyond, again, because enough is enough. This is African-American history, Mark. You've got two black men that are giving the perception to a majority-minority community that we can't that are giving the perception to a majority minority community that we can't work together and that is not true. We can. We must. I don't care who gets the win in this. It doesn't matter to me. Because if we succeed, this community succeeds. We have to work together. Please, please, please hold your applause. We have to work together for the good of Wyandotte County. And so we've met before and we've gotten nowhere. And so I say to you again, those standing committee assignments were not deprived of you. You are not going to be kept off any standing committees. That's not the goal and the intention. The goal and the intention was to say, hey, what do I do to get Commissioner Davis back to the table so we can have a conversation, so we can have a real conversation? Not about throwing shade or hate or scrutinizing each other openly, but how do we have a conversation to do the things that this community wants us to do? Lower their taxes, work on BPU, find affordable housing, economic development, do things for the disenfranchised, look at diversity and racism within this organization. Women and minority businesses, infrastructure, youth programs, homelessness, poverty, food deserts. Those are the things that they want us to work on. I have not met one resident that has said their top priority was for anybody in this unified government to find a way to to curtail the powers of the mayor, unlike has never happened before. So my challenge again to you, and I dare you, please come to the table and any of you, we've sent out invitations again. I've sent them all out through the list. Please work with me. We have to do this. Whatever differences we have, we have to put them aside. Our success is going to be the success of this community and they want us to work together. I don't know any other way that I can say that. I have the utmost respect for you. I know you're capable. I know that we can get a lot done together. And I challenge you to come to the table and work with me on the things that matter. Are we going to agree on everything? No, I don't expect us to. I know you care. I care. Let's show this community that we care enough to put whatever differences that we may have. I don't have any. Because I've been asking to meet with you. But if there are differences there, let's work them out as men, as professionals, as elected leaders of this town. And let's put the work and the needs of this community above ourselves. I'm willing to do it. And if I wronged you in any way, please let me know so we can have that discussion and and move forward in a way that's positive. And so there's no more shade, there's no more undermining, there's no more obstructing, there's no more accusations or insinuations in those things. I don't do that to you. From the first day I met you, I was impressed with you. For those who don't know, he started on my campaign. And I supported you. And I stood by you. And I wanted you to be successful. That desire for you has not changed. I want you to be successful because your success is going to be the all of our success. I don't want any more confusion, any more divisiveness because it is unhealthy to getting the work done for the people of Wyandotte County. And they've told me, Mayor, you all have got to do better. And this community deserves better than what they've been saying. And I don't want Wyandotte County to become the mockery of the metro because we cannot get along and work for the common good of this community. So I say that respectfully. I know that Commissioner Markley has mentioned about moving some things forward. I share in that along with Commissioner Bynum and Commissioner Burrows, who also agreed. Please make sure that Commissioner Davis is assigned a committee of his choosing. And then Commissioner Davis, I challenge you to work with me in those standing committees and in this full commission and outside these walls on behalf of the people. So we can get good things done. Wyandotte County has so much potential to be great. Let's make that happen. Thank you, Commissioner Townsend.
Thank you, Mayor. I made the motion to have this issue sent to the standing committee. So I believe when I met, made the motion and it was approved by my colleagues, I did so with the understanding that the mayor would bring it back. I had that same confidence. Let me also say that working with all of us, we will have different opinions about things. So it is not working against the mayor. If each of us has a different opinion, we all sworn up to uphold the constitution. No one person has all right or all wrong. So in working together, there will be differences in the vote. I I just hope people realize that. So I I would endorse, if we can't make a motion, to send this back. Have the AHS committee look at it. I'm glad Commissioner Davis will be put on committees of his choosing and to move on in that way. So I asked Counsel, Mayor, what's the best way to move on with this?
Thank you, Commissioner. We will take a straw poll. I believe we have a few other commissioners who want to make comments. In the interest of time, and I'm going to allow for that, I would like to say that I do agree with you. And I'd like for the public to know, none of us are perfect. All of us are human. We make mistakes. We do. Hopefully, we learn from those. We get better. Failure is how you learn and that's how you get better. I believe that when we, one of us falls or when one of us don't make a mistake, it's our opportunity and not just your elected leaders, but even you, the community. Tell us if we're wrong. Tell us if we're not measuring up. The open mic is an opportunity for that. That's how I get better. I I've told people before that if I'm not measuring up, please let me know. You're not going to hurt my feelings. I want to get better in the services of the community. And if my fellow elected officials are falling short, I'm not one to step on them while they're down. I want to help pull them up as well. Because to get things done for this community, we have to get it right. And failure is not an option with what we're looking at here in Wyandotte County as far as our fiscal situation. We've got too many other issues on the table than to be worrying about minor matters that don't really reflect the interests of anybody, the hardworking people in Wyandotte County, what they really want done. They don't care about this infighting and who likes who. They just want us to get the work done for this community. And that's what I want. And so I just ask all of us, I can get better? I'm a young new mayor, finishing my first year. Have I made mistakes? Of course. That that's, that's life. Is it intentional? No, my heart is pure. I care about people. I care about this community. I'm not here to hurt anyone. Do I need anything? No. I'm not here for any personal gain. I'm not trying to up on my come up. I'm not looking for higher office or book deals. I retired. God blessed me to be able to do that. I'm here because I just want to make a difference because people ask me to do and be that difference. And I'm willing to work with all of you. And this is a new year for all of us. Let's work to do better and let's start working on the things that really matter for Wyandotte County. And I can tell you, over the course of three days before Christmas and since then, we've really been working and miring ourselves down in things that really are irrelevant in the big scope of things that matter to everyday, hardworking people. It's stressful for our employees. I've talked to several of them. They're caught in the middle. Our community is dissatisfied. We all look like shady politicians that can't get along. And we are a mockery from here to Topeka, and I've heard it. Let's do better, please. Commissioner Ramirez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a request and hopefully it's not a big request. The complete review of commission rules should be followed, should go under the jurisdiction of the Administration and Human Services Committee. The document you gave us of committees and their jurisdiction complete completely states commission rules. It's not under the jurisdiction of the Charter Committee. The Charter Committee and the commission rules are completely different documents. And with all due respect, I believe we will do more good under Administration and Human Services than the Charter Committee. So I ask Commissioner Bynum, as the Chair of AHS, that a full review of commission rules become under your jurisdiction of that committee as it clearly states of the document that the mayor gave to us. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
Oh, boy. Okay. Mayor, I think that one of the things that you have done, and this is why I still believe we need some insurance as commissioners, is because there have been times that you've broken your word. When Levert Murray brought the developers before us and we all spoke about Willie Lanier and and made, and by the way, it's Black History Month. Willie Lanier, for many of you who do not know, is the son of a former Kansas City Chiefs player. He is mayor, are you going to? I'm going to wait for you to be the presiding officer and get decorum, if you would, please.
No, it's the gallery.
Mr. Commissioner, please, let's, it's called emotional intelligence. Let's utilize that.
Emotional, it's a point of order. The, it's the gallery that is that is speaking and they're, they don't, they're not authorized to do so. Can I speak? Can I get a ruling? Commissioner, we, we will, we will take a two-minute recess for everybody to cool their heels and come back. Before we come back, I'm going to ask the crowd again whether you like any comments of anybody, and this is going into the full commission meeting. Please be respectful of people's viewpoints, whether you like it or not. Be respectful.
And I'd like my time when we come back.
Commissioner, I've never, I've never, I've never taken time from you. All I ask is that let me do my job. I don't need you to tell me how to do it, okay? We'll take two minutes. Yes, yes. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much. And I think we need a little timeout. I know there are a lot of motions here. Again, I'm going to ask you, please respectfully, if you can just maintain your composure, allow people to speak so they can get their remarks out. Keep your comments to a minimum. There is a time and a place for that. I just ask that we just be respectful of one another. We all are neighbors. We all know each other. We all live here. And we all have the same goals and objectives, which is we all want a better Wyandotte County. So Commissioner Davis, you can continue.
Thank you, Mayor. I think there's been some, well, there's been a lot of misconceptions about me and my my issues with Mayor Garner. Mayor Garner, my issues with you have not been personal. They have been policy-based. You stopped a black developer from developing in downtown Kansas City, Kansas. Right? That's what happened. That is a fact. If you do not know who Willie Lanier Jr. is, or what happened to his project, or how it could have been a catalytic project for development in downtown Kansas City, Kansas, it's Black History Month. Let's talk about how black people have been mistreated. Are you going to, I mean, no, I'm I'm just seeing if if you wanted to make sure that there's decorum.
Yes.
The other, the other issue has been, yes, Mayor Garner, I did work on your campaign. I left because of the very disagreements that we're having right now. You have ruled with an iron fist. You have tried to run City Hall like the police department. We do not work for you. I do not work for you. I want to work with you. There are things that you have proposed that I agree with. We talk about the sales tax. I agree, there should be some option there. We can talk about other issues when it comes to development. I agree. But the way in which this has happened has not been fair. I am glad that I'm getting my assignments back. I'm glad that we have your word and I will absolutely hold you to it. However, I would like to see better and I would like to see it consistently. I will yield on my request for us to vote on these changes for the rules and procedure tonight. I understand I don't have the votes. I don't have the support from my colleagues and I'll follow their guidance and their wisdom in working this through the Standing Committee of Administration and Human Services. But this should have never been personal. It shouldn't. And the fact that it was, you know, it was under your leadership, Mayor Garner, is a black eye from Wyandotte County. And that's unfortunate. Thank you.
Well, you you had a lot there, Commissioner. Well, it's not personal for me. And again, I've never said anything bad about you. And I challenge you to look on any of my social medias or anybody in this community, and you know who they are that have tried to get me and you to sit down. So that is totally not true. There's nothing personal. I have no personal. I'm going to say it again. I want you to be successful. I love you as a brother. I've said that privately and I'm saying it open. And I'm telling you now, we have to work together. You don't know me, so don't speak to my career as a police officer because I had the nomenclature of being called Officer Friendly by many people in the community. People trusted me and if I was anything less than that, I would not be mayor today. I'm going to ask, you made another statement about black developers. I would agree with you on Mr. Lanier. But if I did, we would both be wrong. So I'm gonna ask Levert Murray to bring clarity to that for the public, and hopefully this misconception about what occurred can finally be put to rest in your mind.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Commission. Mr. Lanier had a project before this committee some time ago, and in fact, as I track this development, and let me say for the public that, yes, I am Levert Murray, currently Chief Economic Development Advisor to Mayor Garner. Before I came back after my retirement, I was, and before I retired, I was the Director of Development, Director of Economic Development for close to forty years. And you will see my handprint on many major developments throughout this community, including General Motors, including the Hilton Garden Inn, including the Reardon Convention Center. And I must say that because I've heard that there have been some members of the Commission telling others that I have a personal grudge against Mr. Lanier, and that that's certainly not even close to the truth. And that I have something personal in support of the Convention Center, the Reardon Convention Center. And I will tell you, those that that don't know me during my past nearly forty years, yes, I managed the construction of the Convention Center. Yes, I managed the construction of the Hilton Garden Inn and the BPU Office Building. Yes, I secured the grants for those developments. Yes, I secured the grants for the parking structure behind the Convention Center and the BPU. But I have no personal or emotional attachments. If you give me something better, I wouldn't have a problem tearing it down and building that something better, and that's how I am on all projects. But I will tell you that as I pursue development deals throughout our community, and that's always been the case for me, I think developers deserve an opportunity to better their proposals. And typically, when I work a deal, a developer might get two opportunities for an extension of their contracts to do what they have committed to do. I've never had a situation where there are four extensions to a project. That was the case for the Indian Springs Scavuzzo Project. I recommended, we end the nonsense, if you will. And we did that on Scavuzzo. When we, when I learned of four extensions for the Reardon Project, it had nothing to do with Mr. Lanier. I've known Mr. Lanier a great number of years. I like him. I think we get along. But it's business, and I could not recommend to you to provide extension number five for a project that's taken years to develop, and I've still not seen the financing commitments for the project, but that's beside the point. My recommendation was, it's not time to do extension number five. That project was not withdrawn by the mayor or anyone else. That project had a drop-dead date that expired on December thirty-one. When that project reached December thirty-one, its contract was null and void. And that is what happened to the Lanier Project for the Reardon Center. Now, I have personally spoken with Mr. Lanier. And Mr. Lanier has, Lanier has come back with a proposal that will allow the Unified Government to keep its only Convention Center in our community, and also build what he proposes in an apartment building attached to the Convention Center as opposed to tearing it down. Now, when that was, when that project was taken before the Standing Committee last month or so, Mr. Lanier presented a third project, if you will, on the UMB Bank site. I was surprised that he didn't mention the, the alternative of attaching his building to the Convention Center, and I know maybe some of you have seen the plans for that. I know when I learned of it, I took it to Commissioner McKeonan. Why? Because it's in his district, and Mr. McKeonan viewed that, and I thought that when he came before the Standing Committee, that would be presented. It wasn't, but I want you to know that I, the mayor has said to Mr. Lanier, I have said to Mr. Lanier, we want to work with you, but we, we, we need a Convention Center too, and there was an option to, to accommodate Mr. Lanier and also have a first-rate Convention Center. So I just wanted to point out that no one killed that project. It had a drop-dead date of December thirty-one, and it didn't meet the requirements by that date. Mr. Lanier will tell you that. But we are still communicating with them, and we're trying to bring that project forward.
Thank you, Mr. Murray, and I can say just for the record, I've spoken to Mr. Lanier, and he wants to accommodate a redevelopment project at the Reardon Center and beyond. And I've talked into our administrator on several occasions. For the record, nobody is trying to keep an African-American developer out of Wyandotte County. Me, of all people, right? Would try and do that. We want a good quality project. We, people have said that they want a first-class Convention Center to get some of the residual flow over from Kansas City to Missouri. I support Mr. Lanier in his efforts. I support his new proposal that he brought back. I encourage staff to work with him because he is the only developer that we know of that is willing to do something in that area. I don't care who it is. If they are shovel-ready, and they can bring the types of good services and resources that Wyandotte County deserves, my thing is, let's make it happen. And I've given staff that option. And I'll go a step further. Back in, I believe it was August, Mr. Murray brought developers to this dais as well. Over half of them were minorities that had historically been shut out from this Unified Government. They couldn't even get a seat at the table. And to this day, for whatever reason, because that meeting turned very chaotic, in which it shouldn't have. And you can go back and roll the tape, and you decide for yourself who caused the chaos. Some of those developers said they will never come back to Wyandotte County again. Shameful. And none of them needed money. They had the financing, they were ready to go, and they were ready to do the things that Mr. Murray and myself asked them to do, and as they developed east of six thirty-five, in the disenfranchised, disinvested areas in the most poorest zip codes anywhere that you can find in the state of Kansas, from areas where people have been begging for development, redline areas. And these people have historically not had a seat at the table. We offered them to at least bring forth their vision, and they still haven't had that opportunity. We gotta do better. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I would say relative to Mr. Lanier, I just ask that to all parties that are involved, let's get us something as to the commission that we can vote on. Up or down? I know we have procedures in place. Have to go through standing committees, they have timelines, and they've gone over some timelines with some amendments, but I'm saying, whatever it takes, this is drug on for far too long. Just get something to the commission that we can vote on. Up or down? Up or down? That's my only, that's my only request. Relative to the document that is before us tonight. I think Commissioner Bynum mentioned that we could come to the, to her committee, the Administration and Human Services Standing Committee. It looks to me that the next meeting would be on the thirteenth of this month. Is that correct? So I ask that, my ask would be that if we can get that through Standing Committee, can it be fast-tracked to the full commission meeting on the sixteenth? That's, that is my request. If we can get through that document, can it be fast-tracked? Can we get some assurance that it can be fast-tracked to the full commission meeting? Because it appears to me the next full, full commission meeting won't be until March the ninth. So at least that's what my calendar shows. So that's the, that's the request that I would have, that if we get it approved in in Standing Committee, can it be moved fast-tracked to the full commission meeting? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And, and just to clarify, I have worked with our administrator, and she is actively working her and staff with Mr. Lanier, and they are trying to get something before this body, and, and they have made that commitment to continue working with them. So. Commissioner Bynum?
Mayor, thank you. I see two things to clarify, to clarify what Commissioner Markley had brought forward earlier. Returning this or sending this to, what I'm hearing is Administration and Human Services for work and proposed action that would come at a fast-tracked, as a fast-tracked item to the next full commission meeting. I want to make sure that that I'm hearing what you heard, for one thing, and what the commission is, seems to be having consensus around, and then just secondarily, the technical pieces of getting that, getting all of this onto a February thirteen agenda, which we just had agenda review for this morning, and we were proposing to have a an agenda ready to publish tomorrow. So I'll look to Administrator and Chief Counsel and you, Mayor, for the direction on that, but I think that's what I'm seeing consensus around here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I, I will make a commitment that, you know, I want to work with you all as well on the Standing Committee to make sure that we, you know, the language is something that we all can live with. And that, yes, if we can get the work done, we'll do everything we can. That's a pleasure and a commitment for me. I'll make sure that I give clear direction to the administrator to fast-track as soon as you all get the language completed and you vote to move it forward. I have no reason to obstruct, withhold, hold it back, stop it. I want you all to review it, get it to this full body, and you vote on it so we can move to the things that are really more important than that. So, yes, you have my commitment. Commissioner Ramirez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I I thank our administrator for working with all parties to bring something forward. And this will be the last thing I say on it before, until it comes before us. Again, wouldn't have these issues if we had a fully-staffed Economic Development Department. And with all due respect, Mr. Murray is an advisor to the mayor's office, not to the commission office. He does not recommend to us that his staff. He's a staff of the mayor's office, not of the commission. So that is Department Economic Development Director's duty to be our advisor on economic development projects. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is true. Mr. Murray is an advisor out of my office. I, I ask that you please respect his years of experience and his knowledge and the connections that he has in this community. He does not advise to this commission, he advises to me. He does help citizens bridge them to staff to try and get them to help that they sometimes otherwise can't get in a very timely manner, and that's his role. He's a bridge, he's a great source of information, and a lot of people in this community come to him looking for knowledge and looking to how best to move things forward through the Unified Government, especially this time, as you mentioned, Commissioner Ramirez, where we do have staffing shortages. Commissioner Davis?
And I'll just say very, very quickly, when Mr. Lanier came before us for Economic Development and Finance, the overwhelming response and direction to staff was get the original project to the Standing Committee so that we, as, as Commissioner Johnson had referenced, can finally put this to bed. I would hope that that is what we do. Myself, Commissioners Townsend, Commissioner Stites, Commissioner Burrows didn't say much, I would assume so, but I know for a fact, Commissioner McKeonan, and even BPU member, and Senator Haley, we all agreed, at least no one said anything other than agreeing that Mr. Lanier's original project is the desire of at least half of us sitting up here close to it. And so that would be my comment on that, that we wouldn't just get a project, but the specific project that we gave staff guidance on. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. I want to remind you, you do have a mayor. I do have a role. I, I do have a voice. I do represent the majority of the people in this town that voted for me throughout countywide. And part of my job duty is to project the vision, leadership, direction, financial security of this town. You can look it up yourself to include economic development. And so I need to be at the table. The original plan you talked about is a plan that happened before I became mayor. Because I do compromise, we embrace that plan, but we also embrace, not because I want it, but because we went out and actually talked to people in this community, which are the stakeholders, that said we want a first-class Convention Center to coincide with the Lanier Project. And so Mr. Lanier brought forth a compromise that really brought past project and future vision together that could be even a bigger project. And so that's just something you need to think about, and that is the power of collaboration, communication, and meeting each other halfway to get things done for Wyandotte County that hopefully can at least meet the original expectations that everyone has when it comes to these types of projects. There is a, there was a request on the floor to give direction. I guess we did talk about a straw poll for those that coincide with Commissioner Markley, Commissioner Bynum, I believe Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Ramirez, if I'm wrong. Just, I guess, a show of hands in support, and I believe that our administrator will have clear direction on how to move in that regard. Okay. I think we have a majority there. So with that direction moving forward, we do have to move into our commission meeting. Thank you all. I'm going to. I am, I'm gonna entertain a motion to adjourn.
Markley, move to adjourn.
I have a motion and a second, and I will say that prior to the vote, our commissioners need about ten minutes to take a break, and then so we will start sharp, and I do mean sharp, at exactly seven fifteen. Clerk?
Roll call. Burrows.
Aye.
Townsend. McKeonan.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Kane.
Aye.
Markley.
Aye.
Stites.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We adjourn. We will reconvene for full commission meeting at seven fifteen. Thank you all.
If I could get everyone's attention for a moment, please. Thank you. We do have signup sheet available if you wish to speak during community input. Or for the BPU Pilot Residential Class. If you want to speak, please sign up. Thank you.
Turning by phone should mute their phones when not speaking to avoid background noise. During the meeting, please make sure that you announce yourself by name and title every time you speak so the public that is observing knows who is speaking. This is critical given the number of remote participants and is current guidance from the Kansas Attorney General's Office. I will now call this meeting to order. Clerk, roll call, please.
Good evening and thank you, Mayor. Roll call. Burrows.
Here.
Townsend.
Here.
McKeeranen.
Here.
Ramirez.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
Markley.
Here.
Stites.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Bynum.
Here.
Garner.
Here. Thank you, clerk. Uh, the invocation tonight is going to be given by Pastor Kemper, if he's in the room. It doesn't look like he's here. We will revert back to Pastor Commissioner Harold Johnson. Uh, to give, uh, our prayer for tonight and immediately followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask everybody to stand, please.
I see there's a sign here that says prayer is our weapon. Unity is our strength. King David, uh. Gathered, uh, the people around and he told, or made a prayer rather, and he said that, um. That we'd be one that would unify, God would unify us, how good and how pleasant it is when God's people live together in unity. So let those words occupy our hearts and our minds as we seek to do what is right for those whom we serve. Let us pray. God, our unifier, as mayor and commission. Come before you as a diverse group of persons representing the great tapestry of the citizens they call the Dot Home. While we embrace that which makes us authentically different. Help us to realize that we are better together. Though we may debate, let us not divide. Help us to fight against those forces that seek to divide us. There is far too much at stake. Our lives are at stake, our mortality and our quality of life are all at stake. So, Lord, please anoint us now to emulate your personhood as God the Father, God the Son, and God the Holy Spirit. Unique in personality, unified as one God. This I pray in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and.
Thank you, Commissioner, for that prayer. Clerk, I will ask if there are any revisions to tonight's agenda.
Mayor, sir, yes. Uh, at your discretion, we have added a statement surrounding public input for item number two on your agenda, which discusses the charter ordinance. Creating a new pilot for residential class option. Public input will now be allowed for this item with a two-minute duration per speaker. Additional changes to tonight's agenda include items number three, four, and five on the mayor's agenda, which include ordinances and resolutions regarding term limits and prohibitions. On Unified Government Commission members, adjusting compensation and benefits of the of the commission. And admitting unified government rules and procedures relating to travel on unified government business. That represents all the modifications to tonight's agenda, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, we do have, I believe it's Mayor Harrington, and some of the changes up slightly and. Mayor Harrington, and we've got President Johnson, and they're going to give an update on the administrators, uh, search.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, came here last meeting, gave a brief update, so I'm back.
Mayor Harrington, just wanted to kind of bring up speed. We did conduct our interviews, uh, this week and, uh.
Prior to going into the week, we had from a list of candidates down from thirty-two. Down to sixteen, and then we met and then moved forward six candidates with one alternate. And from that. Two Edward withdrawn before the interview started, so we actually interviewed five candidates on Monday. Little bit of a breakdown on the candidates themselves. Uh, there were, again, thirty-two applicants, twenty-two were white males. Three were African-American or black males. One was, two were more races and one male did not. Identify, uh, any race. There was, there were one African-American. And three black, white, white females that were also part of the initial group, so. We did, uh, again, narrow it down to the six candidates plus the one alternate. And, uh, I'll pause, let Mayor Harrington take.
Thank you.
Take it from there and then I've got some stuff I'll come back to.
Thank you. Yeah, we're, we're proud to announce we're forwarding three candidates, uh, for your review and, uh. Ultimate selection, the first of which is a Mr. John Perp. John is a government executive committed to professional administration, economic development, social justice, and proactive community leadership. He has served as a former city chief legal officer and chief prosecutor. He most recently served as the interim city manager. Uh, John brings twenty-plus years of successful professional government management. Residential engagement and economic development experience working in a diverse urban community. Also, Ms. Elke Doom. Elke is a municipal manager with over twenty years of progressive responsibility and pro- public administration. She is proficient at working with professionals at all levels and has obtained proven results in building relationships with diverse populations. While maintaining the highest level of professionalism. Her backgrounds include proven expertise in budget, finance expertise, intergovernmental and community relations. Downtown redevelopment and capital improvement projects. Also, a Mr. David Johnston. David brings twenty-five years of visionary public service and management experience with success in intergovernmental relations. Economic development, strategic planning, financial management and budgeting, and staff development mentoring. He is a trusted and dependable advisor who delivers ethical, transparent, and engaged leadership to stakeholders of communities. With diverse and often complex needs. He has delivered win-win partnerships, meaningful investment, and quality service. Uh, in the next, uh, week, next Tuesday, the three finalists will visit the county and engage in. The following series of tours, workshops, and meet and greets. Um, we'll have an opportunity to tour the county with these individuals. As well as, uh, the individuals have an opportunity to meet all of you. Uh, also, there'll be a public meet and greet and, um, where the, the citizens of the community will have an opportunity to. To, uh, um, meet these individuals and, um, give feedback on their interpretations. Uh, that we'll have a moderated, a question and answer period, and hopefully everyone can get registered for that ahead of time. That will be, uh, and all prior to, uh, Mayor Gardner and his team having an opportunity on Wednesday. We certainly hope, um, these, uh, applicants meet your specifications. I feel the committee has done a great job and we've, uh, returned a very good product back to you, uh, a great slate of applicants. So, uh, hopefully all this will be wound up by mid-February. I'd like to thank all of you commissioners. For, um, making such, uh, great thoughtful selections to this committee. All of your representatives were exemplary and, uh, you can be very proud of them. They were very professional. And brought a wide range of expertise to this process. Uh, uh, no one could have done this job by themselves and, uh, hopefully you'll be impressed with the. Uh, level of professionalism these applicants bring forward. Thank you all very much.
Then finally, uh, uh, just finishing up on my side, I do believe, uh. Again, that the most qualified candidates that were presented to us from the search firm was advanced forward for your consideration. Uh, three of them, the three that we're moving forward, all received the highest number of votes from the task force as a whole. And if you remember, the task force were, were assembled by all of our governing bodies, so the mayor, the commissioners. All had, uh, a role in selecting this task force. It was very diverse. It was a very well put together task force. There was a lot of conversations. We went back and forth on a number of candidates. There were internal and external candidates and, uh, and again, the three that were thought to be the, the most. Qualified were all moved forward. Appreciate the fact that you guys have all empowered us to go through this process. Personally, I have not heard from commissioners, the mayor, uh. So I think, thank you for allowing us to do our work. I mean, there's no interference in the process. Uh, we got through it quite well and, uh, and again, thank you for all your support.
The, the, the professionals that helped us from govern, uh, gov- Gov-HR were, uh, very helpful. And, uh, that they assisted greatly in, uh, reviewing and bringing forward great candidates from all over the country. And then since I just have one second, you all are addressing situations with the Loring Service Area this evening with the KCK and the. Uh, Unified Government, uh, Police Department, Sheriff's Department and KCK Police. The, I just wanted to make sure everyone knows the Bonner Springs Police Department consists of twenty-seven full-time employees. And currently that includes a cadre of twenty-four full-time certified police officers, a records coordinator. Evidence, records, clerk, and animal control officers. Our department has adopted several law enforces enforcement capabilities in recent years, including an advancement. An, an advanced drone program equipped with state-of-the-art 4K thermal search camera that's been utilized across the whole region. A bike patrol program and recognizing award-winning canine program. Uh, it is, we also are home to the use of a, uh, force, use of force simulator. In addition to other tangible items in our police department, a multimillion-dollar state-of-the-art facility. Um. Uh, we stand ready to assist the Kansas City, Kansas Police Department, the Wyandotte County Sheriff's Department, and the Unified Government. To ensure proper security measures exist for Azure Amphitheater and think that there could be a, a similar. Um, agreement between the three to help provide that security. I know that's, uh, the season's coming up quickly and our administrations are working on that. So, thank you, gentlemen and ladies. Any questions you have for the county administrator? Any questions you have for the County Administrator Search Project? See, then wish you all the best.
Commissioner Stites has a question.
Oh, yes, sir.
Not so much a question, but thank you, guys, and thank for everyone that was put on the committee by each of us. We appreciate your hard work. Thank you.
Certainly.
I share in that. Thank you, mayors and this president, for, for the hard work. And, and thank you to the, all the volunteers, because those were volunteers. It's been a lot of time and hours trying to get us to where we're at today, so thank you. Dr. Edwards, who is my chief of staff, if you could come forward. She's going to talk briefly, real briefly about next steps in that process.
Thank you, Mayor Mildred Edwards, Chief of Staff. On Tuesday, the seventh, we will begin our day with windshield tours, celebrating Wyandotte County and giving our candidates an opportunity to tour our great county and to take advantage of the expertise of our building and logistics staff along with the gentleman that you just heard from and another appointee on the task force. So they will be touring. While they're doing that, I've submitted a request also during that timeframe for them to be able to meet with, if possible. Now, this is a moving calendar, and we're trying to do a lot with them in a very short period of time. But we would like for those that aren't touring to then meet with members of, key members of our administrative team. So administrative staff giving tours of the Unified Government buildings and to make sure that they have a keen knowledge and understanding of what we would need them to consider in their role in that capacity. They will meet with the Commissioners, as noted, one to four o'clock, and they will individually be able to ask questions. And Commissioners, thank you all for submitting your questions. I've compiled those and submitted it, submitted them to Commissioner Bynum. And you'll be able to ask questions to get to know those candidates and to know who that task force has brought before you for your final confirmation. In the evening, the public will have an opportunity, as the chairs noted, and this will begin at six-thirty. Our initial communication to the community was seven PM. That is indeed six-thirty with the reception. You will hear not only from each of the candidates, but from the chairs of the task force again, and the representatives from our search firm. We will break out then into breakout rooms. One being here in the commission chamber, second one will be in the, one of the courthouse areas. And then the third group would be in the fifth floor conference room. Candidates will rotate through each of those groups. So we have about a hundred and one residents that have registered to attend that event. And so they will break out in groups of three and remain in those groups for the evening. And the candidates will rotate through, and there's been not, questions also submitted by our community residents to the candidates that will be fielded by, again, our chairs and a representative from the task force who will be moderating each of those sessions. On Friday, the mayor and our team will have an opportunity to meet with them, and then they will also have an opportunity to meet with department heads and ACAs. So that's the plan. We're really, really excited about our candidates, and hopefully you will enjoy meeting them as well.
Thank you, Dr. Clark, there was one last revision. Could you read that?
Mayor, the approval of the Administrator's agenda will not be put in motion tonight.
Thank you. That takes us to the mayor's agenda, where we have two items on the mayor's agenda. Item number one is community input and discussions with the public. It's a public forum allowing citizens to express concerns and present solutions relating solely and specifically to the unified government span of control and interests. I will now open the public comment. I'll ask the clerk to provide a synopsis on how many comments were submitted through the clerk's office. I would remind the public, please be respectful. Hold your applause and comments. Be respectful whether you agree, disagree. Just respect everybody's opinions as neighbors, as common citizens, and as the adults that we are, and allow people to speak freely without any interruption. You'll be given up to three minutes, no more, and I'll ask the clerk to read some of the grammars.
Thank you, Mayor. I will just make a quick note that we will actually, it was published as two minutes for the speaking time this evening. The clerk has not received any written request for, for engagement here, but we do have twenty-four people signed up. And we can start, Mayor, at your discretion, calling them in order.
Yes, you can proceed, Clark.
Our first speaker is Helen Hokinson. On deck will be Donna Henderson Hoyt.
And just a reminder to all, we will call the on-deck people, so please, please line up behind and be prepared to move forward. Thank you.
I'm Helen Hokinson. I live at sixty-four fifty-three Cernich Road. I also own a home at four nineteen South Eighty-first Street where my son lives. Mayor Garner, thank you for reinstating Commissioner Davis to his standing committees. In doing so, you've blown up my perfectly crafted two-minute statement, but I forgive you. I've recently begun asking questions around KCK animal control procedures, and the more I learn, the greater need I see there is to update those procedures. Just one example of what I'm hearing involves an eighty-year-old woman who has moved into a new house where the previous owner has abandoned a dog that is desperate to get into the house. He sleeps huddled near the foundation, and the lady can't let her own dogs go outside because she's afraid of it. One day, the dog gets into the garage. Animal control does come, gets the dog out of the garage, and then lets the dog go. During one of the last cold spells that we had, he became so desperate to get inside the house
One minute.
that he tore the pads of his feet and broke his nails, leaving blood dripping down the door. Is this what Wyandotte County residents deserve? When folks drive down that street and see that, are they going to want to move into our community? I'm asking myself if I want to continue living in this community. This is not just an animal problem, it's a people problem, and it deserves attention. I was excited to attend a land bank listening session with Commissioner Davis. It seemed that the potential that brought me here to Wyandotte County was starting to be realized. He and I had talked about setting up similar animal control listening sessions, which is why I was very concerned about him being removed from his standing committees. The rest of what I was going to say was in my original, I, so I would love to have some listening sessions. Off the top of my head, there are so many things we can do right now before listening sessions. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Donna Henderson Hoyt. On deck will be Brandy Armstrong.
Good evening. I'm Donna Henderson Hoyt, six-four-two-two Cernich Road, KCK. I'm also a coordinator for Cernich area Neighborhood Association. I've communicated with many of you before recently. I appreciate that. I'm saddened by the recent stuff that's gone on. It really is, the perceived perception is not something that Wyandotte County needs to be involved in, and we need to come together and work together. Our community, Ellen is my neighbor and friend, have many issues that need to be addressed from animal control, code enforcement, problem properties, planning and zoning. I've met with Commissioner Davis, who is my commissioner, as well as Commissioner Bynum, and have recently met with Chief Legal Counsel Waters to go over a situation with protest petitions. Our systems are not coordinated, they're not connected. We've got mapping, listing one person as an owner of a property, and you've got appraiser's office listing other person as your owner of a property, and that has affected us. And I know if it's affected me, it's affecting everybody in Wyandotte County. This community needs to come together. This government needs to come together and fix some of these issues. You've got seventy people, you're looking for seventy openings. I've applied for some of those positions, and I don't know if I ever will again. Besides the initial re, email that says you've received my application, I have not received one communication back that said my application's been reviewed, in review, rejected for whatever reason. That's just not professional, and it's sad to say, this is the county I live in. I want to see some changes, and I expect to see everybody working together and making that happen in the future. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brandy Armstrong. Faith Rivera on deck.
My name is Brandy Armstrong. My address is twenty-four zero seven Nebraska Court. Mayor Commissioners, I thank you for the ability to come before you and speak tonight. I am so thankful that Commissioner Davis has been reinstated and that District Eight once again has a voice and a vote on the standing committees. But I still stand before you, disheartened and disappointed, community member and voter. Last week, there was an attempt, for whatever reason, to block the item being discussed and being displayed for the public to follow along with. In order to have a government that is truly for the people, it is imperative that there is accessibility for all community members. Not having visible what is being discussed, not having an ASL interpreter, nor having any translators for our wonderfully diverse community is keeping the commission meetings from being truly accessible for all. As someone who suffers from an auditory processing disorder, being able to follow along with written word is key for me to being able to have true and equitable access to our meetings. And I know I am not the only one in our community with this disorder. That is why I'm asking you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, to please work together to put into place
One minute.
a rule that would make it mandatory that all agenda items that are in written format, such as the rule discussed last meeting, to be displayed during the entirety of discussions, that there be a permanent ASL interpreter for all meetings, and that there be at least three translators for the top three languages spoken per capita in Wyandotte County at all meetings. I thank you for your time, and I hope you will all help to make our unified government more accessible for all. Thank you.
Faith Rivera is our next speaker. Marge Gasnick on deck.
All right. Hi, my name is Faith Rivera. I am a registered voter in Kansas City, Kansas. I live in Turner. As some of you guys know, I am on the Parks and Rec Board. But I, what I'm here to say is I am a registered voter in Kansas City, Kansas. And I've had a conversation with you, Mr. Mayor, before you even ran about putting, you know, making sure that I hold you, we all hold your feet to the fire. And this is what it looks, this is us coming to commission meetings and holding your feet to the fire. And with that being said, I support reforming the rules to stop abuse of power by a single body. This is what we talked about before when we had a conversation about, you know, running and, and what we, you know, about the wanting change. And this is exactly what it is, is we want, we were sick and tired of same people having the same power and continuously not listening to us. So this is what it looks like. It does not have, it, it, and sadly, it's coming from a person of color, in my opinion, and I am a person of color. I am a Latina. To stop the abuse of power by a single body, I support my commissioner to vote for fair representation for all districts in Wyandotte County. Please vote to reform the rules. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marge Gasnick. Nikki Richardson on deck.
Good evening. I'm Marge Gasnick. I live at thirty-three twenty-two North Fifty-fourth Street. I want to thank, first of all, thank the employees of the Unified Government. Your work is vital to the community, and I appreciate all of you. And I want to thank the UG Commissioners for their service and their work within their districts. And Ms. Harrison Lee, thank you for your work as our interim county administrator. Mayor Garner, I appreciate the great responsibility that you face as mayor. I voted for you because I felt you could bring about the changes that are needed. But I do feel you've gotten off track. I was happy in the previous meeting to hear that Commissioner Davis will be reinstated on standing committees. I felt like the, the memo that was sent out last Friday struck me as terribly damaging and unproductive. So I recommend a reset on your relationship with him. I also want to express my strong support for the proposed changes
One minute.
to the rules and procedures regarding agendas and standing committees. These changes have actually been needed for a very long time, well before you were in office. Why are they needed? For the balance of power. We have an imbalance of power right now, and that affects all of the districts in, in Wyandotte County, and we need a stronger and clearer set of checks and balances for the governance of the Unified Government Board of Commissioners. We have a commission in place that is willing to make these changes now, if you will allow that, for the good of the community. So I ask you, Mr. Mayor, to please be the change you want to see. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nikki Richardson. America Patton on deck.
Good evening to the Board of Commissioners and the mayor. I thank you for your time, and I come to you today as a lifelong resident of Wyandotte County. I live in the Village West area, and I'm a registered voter. I'm also an active and engaged citizen that is committed to fair and honest governance and transparency and accountability throughout all governing bodies in Wyandotte County. I stand here with a plea to the Board of Commissioners to support a reform to the current rules that until today left District Eight without representation and has slowed the county's progress over the last year. Furthermore, if there is any concern that these people behind me, some even who are associated with the local NAACP chapter, speak for all the black people in this county, and this is no disrespect to them. They do not. Admittedly, some of us may have been too silent over this last year. And honestly, I feel that we wanted to give the mayor some grace in his first year because this was his first time in an elected office of this capacity, and because he was our first black mayor in this county. Unfortunately, I fear that grace has led some of the Commissioners and UG staff to believe that there are no black voices that stand with you. So I want to say that I stand with you. There is real and understandable trauma in this room that people really did experience from previous administrations. And there have been attempts to use this genuine fear from the past as a just cause to villainize the current Board of Commissioners. But I know for a fact that if a previous mayor acted this way, they would not stand for it. So I ask the mayor and his supporters to not diminish your ethics and values today. Please support reforming the rules. Thank you.
Our next speaker is America Patton. Reginald Jones on deck.
First want to say thank you to our Honorable Mayor Tyrone Garner and our elders in the room who are giving the opportunity to speak. I'm here representing the Vernon Multipurpose Center and the Quandero Underground Railroad Museum, as well as the Flint Hills International Writing Project and Porter State University as a final semester student for my second master's degree. My first question is pertaining to Special Olympics, the Unified Champion Schools. According to recent data that I received, currently thirty-one percent of Special Olympics Unified Champion Schools are in urban school districts. But only eight percent are in urban school districts of the highest need according to the championship school. So my question was, is there anything in place to help accommodate the growing need for students with special needs? And my next question is pertaining to the infrastructure and the one trillion dollar bill that was signed into law by President Biden. Is any of those funds going to be allocated to our community to help rebuild some of the infrastructure to where our native and indigenous cultures live and are, many are still sustaining? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Reginald Jones. Samuel Fennell on deck.
First of all, give an honor to God, to the mayor, to all the, all of his colleagues. My say will be short. I want to say this is that I was here probably about one, about three months ago, and we made a petition for some of the things to get done in Wyandotte County. I'd like to thank Mrs. Townsend. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor for even just listening to us on the things that we needed to get done, and they got done with the, with help of Mrs. Townsend in the first district. I just want to let you know, appreciate that. We got the trek for Car Bruce Middle School. We got a tree cut down that was over the water park at eleven, oh, Heathwood Park. But I'm making But I'm making a plea tonight to let you know that I was listening to Dr. Levert Mary. He says some things are in place for the little people, and I just wrote this down. It says, "No one speaks up for the little people at Parkwood Pool" that has been there
One minute.
sixty years plus. And I'm sixty-seven years old. There's nothing been done. We just asked that you add on a water slide for the little people and a water shower that, that need to be put on the outside. But I really, really do appreciate the mayor and Mrs. Townsend for completing the things that we asked for in the community. And I seen it, and I'm just really glad and I appreciate it, and I hope you don't forget about the little people. Thank you. And I'm one of the managers down at Parkwood Pool. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Samuel Fennell, Carolyn Wyatt on deck.
I don't have too much to say. I just want to, I'm just a concerned citizen. Tyrone, you remember me? Remember when I told you that when you get this job, it's not going to be easy, but I just hope you make it and get, get stuff done. Because with the other administration, they didn't do a darn thing for the North End. So I live a four or five walker, and when they built Ohio's down there, I just, I stayed in Wyandotte County. I could have moved to Johnson County, but I said, "Well, something might be done," but you know, that's my community. So I've been, I've been here for about eighty years, but you know, I'm just blessed, but I just hope you get something done.
Our next speaker is Carolyn Wyatt, Curtis Martin on deck.
Good evening, Carolyn Wyatt, three fifty-nine Troop. I just want to say that I was on Tyrone's campaign. And Mr. Davis came on the campaign and Nikki Johnson. And Nikki Richardson, sorry. Anyway, Mr. Davis left the campaign after somebody came on that actually got his money from the union for him. And he left the campaign. Before he left, he sent a letter to each of the people on his campaign. So thinking we was going to leave the campaign. And so then next, Nikki Richardson left the campaign and sent a letter to all of us, thinking we was going to leave the campaign, wasn't going to break it up. So she became his campaign manager when he ran. And we still supporting, I still supporting him. I think, you know, he's, he's a black man. Yeah, I still supporting him. But what I'm saying is that he must have been a plant. A plant is somebody to come to try and destroy what you're trying to do.
One minute.
But all that do, it, all it did was made us work harder. It was only a few of us, eighty-year-old people, whatever, but we worked harder, and we succeeded with that. So what I'm saying, Tyrone's doing a great job. There's nothing wrong with what he's doing. It's just people working against him. There's a lot of evilness in this world. And, and we need to change that because God is not going to bless that. So what I'm saying, it's nothing wrong with what he's doing. You had mayors a hundred years ago. This is the first black African mayor. So what is the problem? You didn't want the changes then. Why you want the changes now? Is there a threat? It must be a threat. So what I'm saying, he's doing a great job. We support him. People put him in the, in that position. More than any other district, the whole community, what Kansas City, Kansas put him in that position. He's doing his job. Support him. Support him. Thank you.
Curtis Martin with Louise Lynch on deck.
My name is Curtis Martin, thirty-seventy-one North Thirty-second, Kansas City, Kansas. A lifelong resident of Kansas City, Kansas. And I've been knowing Tyrone, I'm a mayor for years. And I know he supports this city and trying to, he wants change in this, in the northeast part of town because everything's been going out west. And it's, it's a shame. I look in the newspaper, and I see one of these commissioners steadily badgering a mayor just trying to make change in this city because other mayors haven't, hadn't done very many things in the area at all. And every time I look up, I'm hearing this name, Davis, Davis. If you don't like it, you need to get out of here and go home and get you another job. It goes for any of the rest of you guys that voted against him and talking against him. You don't like what he's doing, get out the seat, resign and get out the seat. Simple as that. And it's a lot of things we need done in Wyandotte County, and I've told Tyrone about several things. We need a, a dump station for trash.
One minute.
And just several things we need done, and we'd like to see that get done and stop all this bickering. Pastor Johnson, you need to get on board with God. You're a man of the word. You're supposed to be a man of the word. So do what you say. Back this man up that trying to make change for the people around here. And I just got to say that. God bless you, Tyrone. I pray for you. I hope you make it all the way through. Thank you.
Louise Lynch with Mia Jo on deck.
Louise Lynch, resident here in Kansas City, Kansas. There's a few things I had planned to say, but after the meeting earlier, I've changed my mind as to what I need to say. First, I want to say, thank you, Mayor Garner, always willing to compromise. However, we the people say you can't compromise when it surges. I am a voter and the co-founder of Community Conscious Action Network. It is despicable to hear today at this meeting, while you're speaking, you have two commissioners, District Eight and District Six, talking while you're speaking, air-talking, laughing while you're speaking. That's not cooperation. That's not, "I'm willing to come to the table." That is total disrespect and disgrace. That is not a willingness. We the people are sick of this. Enough is enough. If you don't want to have respect
One minute.
for the people, get out. None of you who voted to overthrow this local government has even apologized to the community or to the mayor. Another form of disrespect. It's no longer being tolerated. I stand here today shaking in fear of my life because a certain commissioner on this force right here threatened me and my family. We had to get an order of protection. My husband almost died from that fear. I am here shaking because I don't know what will happen, as they told me that they will not be responsible for what happens to me for opposing them. I am not here to reiterate anyone, but how dare they tell you, Mr. Mayor, that they don't work for you? Well, guess what? They work for the people. We are the ones in charge.
Your time has expired.
We don't work for them. Respect us or get out.
Our next speaker is Mia Jo, Fannie Hill on deck.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm not here on anybody's side. I'm with the people and I'm for the people. The things that are going on in this, this county is a disgrace. We are a laughing stock. I take those signs to the street every day to stop the murder and the violence. I spent thousands on those signs and billboard to unite our community. And when I see how you are being divided, has divided this community. Nobody called me and asked me to bring those signs. The spirit of God compelled me to bring those signs, and it broke my heart that the signs that I take to the street, people come together. Unity is our strength. People love conquers all. This is what I take to the street every day that I have to bring before I count the commissioner. That's a disgrace. You all should all be hanging your head in shame and apologizing for step bagging your colleague, your coworker, and then saying, "The Hispanic community is better than that."
One minute remaining.
They don't approve of that, and neither do I. But Commissioners, I have a lot to say. I'm here on assignment because God has me here. Mayor, you on assignment. You didn't put yourself in that seat, and you didn't give yourself the heart for the people. God has a heart for his people, and his people has always been his heart. And he's given you a heart for the people. You stand for the people, and God will stand with you. Stand for the people. I've listened to people stand here and take sides. I'm not taking sides. Commissioners, the mayor fought to lower our taxes. He fought to lower the BPU bill. I have went to Mr. Davis. I have went to you all and told you we're drowning in taxes. People can't afford the high taxes, and you voted to raise them and fought the mayor to get them raised, but yet you say you lowered the bill levy. Well, why didn't you agree with the mayor on lowering the taxes? And it would have happened. Why didn't you vote with him to bring it, to lower the taxes? Why did you overrode his veto?
Your time has expired.
The whole entire community, black, white, I don't care what you are. I'm here for the issue and for the people.
Ma'am, your time has expired. Could you state your name again? Second call for Mia Jo.
I'm just going to get straight to the point. I don't like how I've been abused and used for seventeen years. And I don't like that Ms. Townsend just act like she runs everything. Now she's trying to do something with the land bank. How is she going to run something about the land bank? A friend called me and said she wanted to buy some land. And then she was told that if she'd buy the land, she got to put a garage on there. How you going to tell somebody what to do with their money? And then you're going to deprive them of it because they're not doing what you said. That's wrong. And if you trying to run us, you don't even be here half the time. You don't even acknowledge nobody, Ms. Townsend. And then Ms. Cherise Harris, I didn't know you exist. I thought you were just an entity. And just, you know, a thing until I see you sitting there. But you never respond to any of my emails or my calls, and there's been about thirty of them since September. But anyway, taxes, yeah, I got a lot. It started three hundred dollars. It's up to nine hundred dollars. I called in, I asked, "Why? Is it extra dog poop?" Because I don't understand what happened. Nothing happened. You know, I haven't built anything on there.
One minute.
No, nothing. And it's just disgusting how you say be open, and we need to talk to you? You just don't know. You got a lot of bullish dodgers around here that you don't even get my information. And then your legal department, they don't want to believe nothing unless they don't believe water is wet until they drowning. So that's where I'm at right now. It took seventeen years for me to even get here and talk because they've been avoiding me, blocking me, giving me all kinds of stipulations, what I got to go through in order to speak. Thank God for this moment, and I just say this is a Jericho moment. Took seventeen years, but hey, I said it.
Our next speaker is Darryl Hall, Tashir Mank on deck.
All right, Darryl Hall, two-three-one-four North Eighty-second Terrace. And I'm not here to badger anybody. I'm here to say, "Good evening, people's choice." You all are the people's choice, and I do understand that a unified government model is a complicated structure that must operate like a fine-tuned machine firing on all cylinders harmoniously in order to achieve the desired results. And we feel that we have proper elected components in position to operate the system for the change that is the will of the people. We have a mayor and CEO who has kept his vow to walk with the people while working for the people. Because he knows that in order to lead the people, you've got to love the people.
One minute.
In order to love the people, you've got to know the people. In order to know the people, you've got to walk with the people. So we, the people, are here asking for your support, Commissioner Ramirez and Davis. Can we get your support? We know we have Commissioner Johnson's. He's called for unity. I'm just calling for unity, not, not calling anybody out, just saying if we work together, I believe we can make things happen just by working together as a whole unit. Everyone working together, we can make a change for the people. So we all look good. We don't, we don't want to be embarrassed. You know, it's not a good look. Don't you all agree? It's not, it's not a good look right now.
Your time has expired.
But please, let's work together.
Our next speaker is Tashir Mank, Simeon Bond on deck.
Hello. Hello, I'm Tashir Mank. Everybody calls me Cece. As a voter in the Eighth District, Mr. Davis, if I was to assume the Eighth District voted you in to represent them, it was not to disrespect the mayor as you've done since day one. I remember being on a virtual call the first time, and you hadn't even been in a good thirty days, and Mr. Gorman called you out for your treatment of our mayor. Now, understand, I did not support Mr. Tyrone, but he is my mayor. He is the first black mayor. You're not even from here. Who are you to disrespect somebody from Wyandotte County? Because when you disrespect him, you disrespect us, sir. You're supposed to be here to represent Eighth District and Wyandotte County, and you haven't done that because nobody else here is disrespecting this man but you. But you. Mr. Mayor, I second that emotion when you took him off of those board meetings, and if you need some good residents
One minute remaining.
to send on those board meetings, I can refer you some. Also, you should also consider removing that ARPA board and asking the US Department of Treasury to come in and audit how Ms. Markley allocated those funds. Because according to your graphs, y'all gave so much money for affordable home, affordable housing that there shouldn't be one homeless person in Wyandotte County. Because see, I actually look at y'all's graphs and listen to y'all. By the way, I was here, present on the front row for the Willie Lanier contract. Mr. Gardner, Mr. Sykes, and yourself were the only three people who didn't know about that contract. All the rest of them knew about time limits and everything else. So if you want to hold somebody accountable for that, talk to Ms. Markley and your Marquettes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Next speaker is Simeon Bond, Vilmer Alvarado on deck.
I want to give honor to the commissioners on the board and staff, the clerks, the attorney, deputy administrator to the mayor. I appreciate all of you and all that you do. I'm not going to be up here long, but what I, what I do want to say is that I, I'm, I've been a resident of Wyandotte County since, since I was seven. My family lived here before that. They've been residents for Kansas City for, for a long time. And as a young person who has aspirations to do a lot of great things in life and has a lot of promise, you know, in high school, when I, when I was growing up, everybody talked about leaving Wyandotte County. And I'm going to be completely transparent with you. As I embarked on my professional career journey, you know, getting a degree in sports management and continuing my career in marketing and entrepreneurship, I had no thoughts of Kansas City. I had no thoughts of Wyandotte County. But I started hanging out with this dude in the summertime that was from Chicago. And he convinced me that my community was worth investing in and that young people could have a voice. And he has a master's in public administration, and I'm just going to say, no, not everybody here is perfect. Not everybody knows what's going on. There's obviously a lot of things that need to be changed, but that's what checks and balances are for. And we don't have to agree on everything, but we do have to agree that, you know, sometimes to move something forward, sometimes to have, you know, progression, that you have to, you have to put your differences aside to what's going to work best, even if it's into the mayor, that, that's what these commissioners are here to do, whether you like to hear it or not. And for the commissioners, that's what the mayor is here to do. Whether you like to hear it or not, we have to check each other's checks and balances, and that's how we'll move forward. And I'm not here to be on anyone's side. I voted for you as well, and I voted for you, Commissioner Davis. And I just, I want to say I appreciate you all, and I believe in you that you're going to push Wyandotte County forward in the right direction, and that's why I decided to stay with you.
Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Vilmar Alvarado, Ruel Swenz on deck.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mr. Mayor. My name is Vilmer Alvarado, and I am a proud resident of this great county and a proud person of color, a proud Latino American. And I support reforming the rules to stop any abuse of power by any single body because this is America, this is a democracy and not a tyranny. I want to say that I strongly support my Commissioner Andrew Davis in voting for fair representation for all districts in this county. And I hope that all And I hope that all other commissioners do the same. I want to say also that I've, I've lived here for many years and frankly, I haven't seen a lot of change happen in this county. And I don't see things being any different with this administration sadly. And I think that in order for real change to happen, we need to reform the system, first and foremost. We need to work together and we need equal power. This is the only way to make change happen in this county and in this country. And I hope that this happens and that, like I said, that all commissioners vote for reforming the rules. Thank you.
Ruel Swens, and I apologize. Linda Sullivan on deck.
Hi, good evening. My name is Arul Stancas Karsaga. Yeah, that's, yeah, that's a mouthful. So first and foremost, I appreciate everyone. I appreciate the Commissioners, I appreciate the mayor, I appreciate everyone for coming here. I've been a resident for Wanda County for quite some time. I graduated from that small little school in that corner, not, not that well-known, to be honest. But, you know, growing up in Wanda County, as being a first-generation immigrant, you know, there was a lot of closer shock. And the closer shock of Wanda County brought in a lot of different perceptions. And growing up in Wanda County, as kind of like one of the youths here, you know, was the perception of leaving Wanda County. And that's fair. I mean, everybody has to leave somewhere, or everybody has to move. But I stand here as a resident, because there's a sort of calling to being in Wanda County. Whether that be familial, whether that be for the duty of your family, or just this is an option that you just tie with the community. There's nothing wrong with it, but it's left a lot of perception with us. And being also instructed for different youth, I also feel very concerned about the perception that we have left in our current system for our upcoming youth. Because this perception has been a generational issue and will be, that will impact the next incoming of potential professionals, politicians, scientists here. And we need to reevaluate our systems and our own sort of like direct values for the upcoming generations that may take all your places.
Our next speaker is Linda Sullivan. Amanda Lindahl on deck.
Good evening. My name is Linda Sullivan. I live at eleven thirty-seven Haskell. I voted for you, Mayor, and to the Commissioners. My question is, why doesn't Kansas have any litter laws? You know what I'm saying? People blow their grass in the street, leave it. And then just, it's no litter laws. I don't see any litter, do not litter signs. My daughters are, soon as they graduated and got jobs, they said, Mama, I don't want to live in Wanda. They moved, they moved up north. They said, I want to live somewhere that's clean, that's neat. There's no trash in the street. And so that's my question, how we, why, why come we don't have litter laws to get the trash out the street and, and clean up our community? Then also I want to ask the question of when the city has a budget, and then you see that budget overflowing into where we get into debt, who stops that debt? Who says, oh, we're in debt. We need to come back and push back some things. And so, you know, we're in debt. And then the Commissioners, when the mayor had a, he had an agenda to get us out of debt, you all, I think you all bashed that down. So what's your, what's your agenda? How are we going to get out of debt? And then, and then do you have a, will that be written down to where we can see how we're going to get out of debt as a county? Because my granddaughter, she's three, she'll be paying taxes. You know, she'll still be paying taxes. And I don't want to tell my age, but I'm older. I think that when I pass, that's going, that debt's going to be left to, if they stay in Wanda County. You know what I'm saying? If they stay. I don't want to live where it's dirty and nasty, and then you in debt. You know what I'm saying? I want to move. But you know, I grew up here and, and my parents grew up here, and really nothing's changed. So we do have to.
Your time has expired.
Thank you, ma'am. We have to change some things.
Our next speaker is Amanda Lindahl. Meredith Sullivan on deck.
Hi, Amanda Lindahl at thirty-four twenty-five Forest Avenue. And I'd second that. We need to do something about the trash, but also the first speaker that spoke about the issues with the animal control. There are packs of dogs that travel around our neighborhoods, and I've been told multiple times that there's no space for them, so we can't do anything about it. But I came here to speak in support of Commissioner Davis and the work that he's done on the commission, particularly with the land bank feedback sessions. I was completely thrilled to be a part of some of those sessions and was just really awesome to hear about a new approach and potential for a redirection in the focus and the priorities of the land bank. Last year, I supported a couple of farmers in applying for purchase of a land bank property in the historic Northeast. And the response was honestly pretty negative at first from that committee. Until Davis mentioned that, hi, we, we maybe should consider the fact that we need some more sources of healthy food in our neighborhoods as well. And so our farmers, eventually with the support of our organization, Cultivate Kansas City, were able to purchase that land bank property. And we were, we were very thrilled for them. But I was sad to hear that my understanding is that they were the only farmers or groups of people interested in gardening, using land for agricultural use that were approved in the past two years. And so that's just really, really disappointing. And so it's been clear that the focus of the land bank has only been on housing development, and I would just urge the rest of the commissioners to continue more of these listening sessions, listening to your constituents, and continuing to think about particularly the land bank being a more well-rounded approach for housing as well as agricultural use to support the farmers that are very in need of land within our county.
Our next speaker is Meredith Sullivan. Terry Bradshaw on deck.
Good evening to everyone. As, as she said, my name is Meredith Sullivan. I live at eleven thirty-seven Haskell Avenue. I pastor church on Thirteenth and Quandero, Antioch Baptist Church. I support the mayor. And my thing is that y'all work for the people. Y'all here to represent the people, and that's happened, been happening. Especially in my neighborhood, I've been here my whole life at the north end. There's nothing going on. It's just like a ghost town. They say they're just going to build up the corridor on Seventh Street from Fairfax. So when people come off the highway, they know they coming into a nice place. Even off of Eighteenth Street, when they come off the highway, they coming into a nice place. All that is blighted. The whole community is blighted. And not only is it blighted, we don't have nothing for kids, we don't have nothing for young people, we don't have nothing. So therefore, they leaving, going to other places that will, you know, give them what they need. So y'all need to do y'all job.
Our next speaker is Terry Bradshaw. Chancellor Adams on deck.
It's an honor and privilege to stand before you, the people of Wanda County and the Commissioners and the mayor. I'm going to cut to the chase tonight and come directly to who I need to talk to. And that is Commissioner Davis. And as I'm talking to you, I want you to do what you usually don't do, is look at me in my eyes as I'm speaking. Commissioner Davis, you said the mayor doesn't work for you, which is true. He works for us, but so do you. You've wasted precious time attacking when you should be collaborating. You're talking when you should be listening, making assumptions, when you should be seeking understanding. While you're telling the mayor how to do his job, you need to do a better job of your own job and sweep around your own front door. Your focus must be on doing what we, the citizens of this community, have elected you to do. And that is be an agent of real change, a champion for what is right. And in the words of Mary J. Blige, no more drama. Your conduct has gridlocked the progress and is directly affecting the northeast side of town. We can no longer wait for an actual grocery store. We can no longer wait for housing projects that we need, homeless shelters. Now is the time for us to build and collaborate. Tonight, Commissioner Davis, you asked the mayor for insurance on him keeping his word. Well, tonight I'm asking you for the same insurance. Will you stop the slick talking, behind-the-back, bike-battling, leaking information to the media? And be a grown man and be a man of integrity that this community needs. Because the people that elected you are counting on you. You're an intelligent young man. You've got a bright future, but you need to do better. And if you don't do better, Pastor Terry Bradshaw Jr., well, watch this. I will take the responsibility to put somebody else in your seat, and it might be me.
Our next speaker is Chancellor Adams. Reese Towers on deck.
How y'all doing? Is my start, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
How y'all doing? My name is Chancellor Adams. I've been in this, I'm from this county. You know, I went to Sumner Academy and then from there I went to KU and everything, and I had the privilege to actually grow up. But a lot of people in this room, I found a lot of leadership too, you know, especially from black men in this room and a lot of friendship and guidance from other black people into, in this room. And I think honestly, I'm just really sad, you know what I'm saying? I think that I'm seeing people that I respected my whole life act crazy. I'm seeing people say things that's just like beneath them. And I don't want to do anything or say anything to disrespect folk. But when you come up here and you say things that doesn't really help anything and actually is not even accurate. I mean, let's just, we have to know how our city is governed. But more importantly, I will say this, just to speak too, because I'm here for Andrew. And I am here because I am from this community, but I am here for Andrew. I support him. And yeah, people don't want to celebrate anymore.
One minute.
But the point is, is that, the point that I'm trying to say is, is that at the end of the day, I didn't want to vote for you. I was at Elevate, you didn't come. And the reason why I say I was at Elevate, Elevate actually had a thing where it was pretty much black constituents. From my perspective, I didn't know you. And this was going to be my opportunity to actually hear from you. And Drew was like, bro, no, 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 you need to vote for him. I wanted to vote for Alvy. I had a conversation with Alvy at a Waffle House. I seen you talking to Bradshaw at first watch. You didn't want to talk to me. You probably didn't know that I'm from Wanda. You know what I'm saying? And to me, that really rubbed me the wrong way. But I voted for you because, not because Drew said, let's vote, but he did encourage it, but more importantly, I saw the bigger picture. You are the first black mayor and I respect you. You know what I'm saying? There's some things that you do I don't like. And I, I hear about it. There's some things that everybody do that we don't like, but we are in government.
Your time has expired.
If I may just say this last point, we are in government. And people are going to not like what we do. But at the end of the day, we have a community that's saying things that's really important. We are a community of diverse groups. And the last thing I will say is, please, y'all, stop saying that people ain't from here. Y'all sound like bigots.
Sir, your time has expired.
Our last speaker that has signed up is Reese Towers.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, community. Mayor, I want to stand in support of you, and I want to tell you that no weapons formed against you will prosper and that you are more than a conqueror. The enemy is here to steal, kill, and destroy, but you got to know that we as a community, see this room, more than half of us have your back. Now, I want to talk to the community. We are their boss. We pay their salary. And if we don't get the things that are done in this community done the way that we need it done, you vote them out. You recall them. And I want to say thank you, Nikki. She was talking about when she said the NAACP. I stand for change. I stand for my people. I stand for the mayor. I stand for the black women of businesses. I stand for the Latino community. But the problem is, we got too much division, and it's coming for one person. I too was on Mayor Garner's campaign. I too know what went on with Nikki and Andrew. Let's talk about it. But one thing we're going to address is, we need to unify in this community. We need to unify. Work on unification instead of division. Don't go on Facebook creating kagas where you can have a personal conversation with the mayor. These are the problems that we're facing in the community. You got two black men fighting against each other, running amok. And it really is one black man fighting against another black man because he do not want to sit and have a conversation. He canceled all his meetings. Let's talk about it. He canceled all his meetings. Refused to meet with half the people in the community. He may meet with some of y'all, but he ain't met with us. That's the problem. He's the one that said he don't need the black people vote. He don't need the black people vote. Well, we gonna show you, Andrew, how bad you need the black people vote.
Mayor, sir, that concludes the speakers here on site.
Is there anyone else before I close this that would like to speak? Please come to the podium, state your name, your address. You have two minutes.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't come up here. I didn't know what was going on tonight. I tell you, I really learned a lot. But I'm glad to be here.
If you state your name for the record, please.
I will. I'm not here to talk about what everyone is talking about. My name is Freddie Wilson. Thank you very much. I've been here in Wanda County all my life. But I would like to take this time, say hello, Melissa. How you doing, sweetheart? We lost a real good friend of ours, me and Melissa, Monday. And I just want to, it just came on my heart to say this. I think unified government somehow should say or do something to honor Ms. Esther. I don't know if you are aware of her. She lived to be a hundred and five years old, probably the oldest person ever lived in the state of Kansas. And no one would ever live that long. But she passed away Monday. She gonna have a funeral Saturday at Portis. But I think there should be some type, it's nothing to give because she had no children, no key to the city or nothing, but just something to recognize.
One minute.
Sweetest woman I ever known in my life. And with that, everybody have a good evening and work it out, whatever the problem is.
Ma'am, please state your name.
Good afternoon. My name is Lisa Walker Yeager, and I will not put my address out here. I am born and raised in Kansas City, Kansas, in the Parkwood neighborhood. This is February second. February is Black History Month. Regardless whether we voted for one person or not, the fact is, we're going to respect each other. Okay? That goes for everybody. I ran against Ms. Townsend, but that's still Ms. Townsend. I'm going to respect her. And I say that, Mr. Davis, because, and I'll point that out to you, because we ran together in the same thing.
One minute.
So it's important that we take the time out, and you're going to need our black votes. And Wanda County, I don't know whether you said it because I didn't hear it. Okay, but Wanda County is mixed with all races. This is the beauty of Wanda County. And the key thing that we need to worry about right now is, he is the mayor and he is for the people. Okay? Not for big corporations, because we have been neglected for so long. You guys get it together, please, because we need jobs. We need BPU to come with us and work with us, and we're trying to get this together and get our bills handled where we can live here. And this is very important because I'm, I work for KC TA. I see, I drive the 101, and I see the people that
Time has expired.
Bus line. And these are not just, these are people that lost their jobs during COVID. These are elderly people that can't
Your time has expired.
I need you, if you don't want, if you want to get up off that, that chair, and if you want to get up off that chair, and I'm pointing to both of you guys, come get on my bus line. Come see what your community is dealing with for real. These are veterans, white, black, brown, Chinese. Our community needs to get together. This is not a white or black thing, and I am tired of it. We're going to get with this corruption and we're going to get it over with. We're going to get with this corruption and we're going to get it over with because the judges say right, the police department ain't right. And we need y'all to get it right. So I want to see y'all two shake hands and say, hey, we're going
Ma'am, your time has expired.
Hello, my name is Pastor Tamika Shannon of Safe Haven Ministries of Holiness Church. Um, I am here on behalf of the people. Stand with, um, Evangelist Fanny Hill when she speaks to the need to address the needs and concerns of the people. Mayor Gardner has participated in several different events that we have put on in the community. He is always upfront. He is always present. Uh, Commissioner Davis, I met you once and I invited you to an event. You couldn't come. You sent me a notification to say that you would schedule a time. And I responded, but we never got that meeting. Now that's not to point finger or make blame, but my point is the people need to have communication and contact with the leadership. The reformation of the community will not begin with buildings. It will not begin with high income housing. It will not begin with beautifying the outside and leaving the inside decrepit and torn and broken down. The mending of what's going on on the inside of the community, it, community needs to be the focus. But you can't, you can't begin the process of healing that until you guys are healed. Unified government, one body, many members. Opinions are good. Differences are good, but we have to learn how to flow together and be unifieds to rebuild this community and show the beauty of the history of this community, this community and the beauty of the diversity of this body of leaderships. You were all chosen for a reason and I'm asking you to look within your hearts and understand why you were chosen to do the job that you were chosen to do. Set aside your differences and come together on one accord to rebuild Wyandotte County. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Andrea Davis. I live in the 8th District. And I have a few words that I have written down, so I'm just going to read them off. Over the last year since the newest elected officials have taken office, I've watched our elected commissioners and UG staff be berated and mistreated by our first black mayor of the unified government. While I am disturbed by the subjugation of each of our elected officials and UG staff that has occurred, I'm even more concerned for the impact that this abuse will have on future generations of young leaders that wish to plant roots and invest in our community. Leaving Wyandotte County has been a common thing amongst, amongst much of the younger folks who have spoken tonight. Um, and I'd like to see our current leaders begin to embrace these young voices of the future in our community. My generation brings a wealth of experiences, education and ideas that are stifled by many of the older generations leaders when we could be building bridges and bringing people to the table. I'm hopeful that our current leaders will begin to do this. I'm asking the commissioners tonight for two things. One, please vote in favor, um, to reform the rules of the, uh, procedures that was unanimously voted through nine to one in the December meeting.
One minute remaining.
And I'm asking for accountability from our elected officials on the treatment of our staff and elected officials as well. I want to say thank you and to each of you for serving. I appreciate all of you and I apologize for the way that the mayor has treated each of you throughout the duration of this year. That is not Wyandotte County. That is not who we are and we deserve better. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, Mayor. My name is Yasmin Bruno Valdez. I am a resident of Wyandotte County since I was three years old. Um, I grew up here in Kansas City, Kansas. I went to William M. White, went to West Middle School, graduated from Sumner Academy, am now pursuing, um, a bachelor's degree at Rockhurst University. I'm studying political science and nonprofit management. And something that you learn in political science is actually, um, about government, which is something that I love and care about. Um, when Tyrone Gardner ran for mayor, I was excited and ecstatic. Um, I remember the feeling when I was like eight years old and Obama had won the presidential campaign and we had a black president for once. Um, I was so proud to see someone representing our community. Um, in the same feeling I got when I saw President Obama win, I got when I saw Tyrone Gardner win. I thought that finally for once our communities would be seen and listened to. And unfortunately, I stand here today feeling disappointed.
One minute.
This community has been torn apart as we've seen all night, um, people arguing and fighting, and I know this isn't who we are. Um, I ask you, Mr. Gardner, to please, you know, open a government book. Let's look at checks and balances. Let's analyze, how can we do better? How can we implement these rules into the community that we have here and make a better government? Wyandotte County deserves it. And I hope that you all listen, that every commissioner here comes together and does shake hands and, you know, talks it out because I, we don't deserve this. And I know that we are capable and, you know, we can do better. Thank you.
Mark, uh, do we have anyone joining us virtually?
Mayor, we do not, sir. Mayor, there is no one, sir.
Okay. Thank you all so much. Um, I was asked to allow this, um, before I became mayor, um, because a lot of people in the community said they weren't allowed to have a voice. Um, and your voice is really important because that's how we get better. Um, we learn. None of us are perfect. But the goal is, is we want to do our best to serve you and to serve you the best, we need to hear from you. And so thank you for all the comments. Thank you all for being respectful and, uh, um, the commitment that we all have is we're going to learn from this and we are going to be a better unified government moving forward. So thank you so much for everyone that participated. That takes us to item number two. It's a charter ordinance creating a new residential class option and lowering the overall percentage gap for the BPU pilot. I'll ask Patrick Waters, Chief Deputy Legal Counsel, to make some remarks. This was something that I spearheaded and wanted to move, to move forward, uh, along with several other commissioners. We've heard you, um, what this does is at least gives this commission an opportunity. Um, as they move through the budget cycle to see how best and to responsibly, um, make a decision, uh, and debate, um, within our, within our means, um, to seek, uh, BPU pilot relief, um, for those that needed most. And so, Mr. Waters?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, Patrick Waters, Legal Department. As the mayor said, the, uh, option before you tonight, it's something that you don't see very often. It's an amendment of a charter ordinance. So as soon as we get this pulled up, I'll talk about it. I'll go, I'll go in and get started. So what the ordinance before you tonight, it would do two main things. It would allow the commission to, the option to separate out the residential pilot percentage when you are voting to set a pilot percentage every year. It doesn't require it, but it would allow you to do so. Other words, you would be allowed to set one rate for residential accounts and another rate for all other accounts. Lower, higher, however you want to adjust it. But that this amendment would give you that option. It would also lower the pilot cap. Thank you. So I talked about number one, providing the option for a separate residential pilot percentage. Number two, it would lower the cap from the current 15% to 12%. We've been at 11.9%, I think since 2014. But this would prohibit, basically set 12% as the cap that cannot, that you would not be able to go beyond. Then just a minor cleanup item. Our current charter ordinance says that we need to notify BPU by September 1st what that percentage is. Given the extended budget season that we now have where we're now going into mid-September, um, just kind of a cleanup item is to extend that to October 1st. Here's the language that's in the amendment. Uh, subsection A is the language that would allow for the separation of the residential accounts versus all other accounts. And then subsection B is the section which would lower the cap, uh, from 15% to 12. So why do we need to do this through a charter ordinance? So first of all, state law originally provided that municipalities, um, can, um, require a percentage of gross operating revenue be transferred to that municipality. We chartered out of that, um, statute a long time ago, how, however, we kept in the gross operating language, um, term. And so under our current ordinance, we set one percentage and that applies to all accounts. What, again, what this would do is separate that out and allow you to set different percentages. Um, charter ordinances require two-thirds approval. There's a 61-day waiting period to see if there's any citizen petition that challenges, uh, that's provided for in state law. So it's just a little bit different than a normal ordinance. So that's kind of the the legal, um, perspective there. Um, I have Debbie Johnsher, Chief Financial Officer, to kind of talk about the practical effect and how, how utilizing the separation of accounts would work in practice.
Good evening, uh, Debbie Johnsher, Acting CFO. Um, so the next slide, uh, just wanted to show you some of the numbers that we have for the BPU pilot. Oh, sorry. Here we go. Um, so the current pilot rate, uh, has been set at 11.9% and it's been that the current rate for, since 2014. Just wanted to show the past couple of years how much, uh, we have collected with the pilot. In 2021, we were at 31.7 million. That was actually down 3.7% from 2020. I believe in 2020, 2020, we were around 32.9 million. Um, so and then 26.3 million of that is from electric and 5.4 from water. In 2022, the pilot, uh, increased about 14%, um, up to 36.2 million with 30.7 of that coming from electric and 5.5 million from water. Currently in the estimated 2023 budget, um, we have the pilot set at 35 million, um, which is down from 2022. However, that it was, I think, a slightly increased from the, the budget that was in 2022. So, so that has currently has 29.2 million from electric and 5.5 from water. The graph over there kind of shows, shows all the way back to 2013, um, what the, um, the increase of the amount of revenue that we've received every year and the, uh, line on there is the percentage change, um, that we've had. So this next one just shows the, um, budgetary effect of separating out, uh, the residential pilot. So currently the BPU has approximately 67,000 accounts. 60,500 of those would be residential. So that's almost 90%. Um, residential accounts generated approximately 12.7 million, uh, in pilot revenue in 2022. And so each 1% pilot reduction in residential accounts, uh, would, would amount to approximately a little over a million dollars in reduced pilot revenue, um, using, according to the 2022 numbers that we had. That is the, um, end of the presentation. So I guess we can stand for any questions, you know?
Commissioner Kane?
Thank you, Mayor. Have we involved any, like, the BPU at all?
Yes, Commissioner, and, uh, obviously, uh, you know, Mr. Johnson and Lori Austin are both here tonight. They're
I'm not talking about them. I apologize. I'm talking about their board members. I would think if, if, okay, and that's where I'm going. The, uh, I thought Commissioner Bynum is already working on this with the folks. Is that correct?
Yes, I have a committee that is working on this now.
Okay. So I don't know why we would do this while she has a committee working on it now. And, and then I would think if we separate this and make it residential and business, can we get sued?
Thank you, Commissioner. That's a good question. We looked into the legality of this and we are comfortable with it. Um, we don't believe that it is a suspect class to separate out residential versus commercial or, um, additional separations. So, uh, we do feel comfortable with the legality.
Are there any other municipalities doing the same thing?
I do not know that, Commissioner.
Yeah, okay, well.
If we could just refrain from comments, let the Commissioner speak, please.
I would rather have Melissa's group work on this and bring it to the full commission. Because she's already working on it. She already has the understanding of what's going to happen in this process. And I'd rather not step on her toes and see what she comes up with. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Bynum?
Thank you. Mayor had approached, uh, me in September, August or September to put a committee together to look at the pilot, which I did. And Dr. Evelyn Hill and, uh, Rose Mulvaney Henry, who's now the current board president of the BPU are working with me along with a number of our staff people, Reginald Lindsay, our Budget Director, um, Mike Grimm in the Budget Office, uh, Monica Sparks with the Clerk's Office and Wesley McCain in the Health Department. Uh, and I'm leaving someone out, I'm sure. And we've had help from Lori Austin providing information uh, from the Board of Public Utilities so that we can sort through the data. And I appreciate, uh, Commissioner Kane's suggestion, um, and I also appreciate the data because one thing that I wanted to be sure that I'm hearing correctly, even though within our committee's structure, I feel like I've heard it several times. And that is, Ms. Johnsher, you saying that 1% pilot reduction just in residential is a million dollars. That's correct. And so that being said, we are hoping, and I have spoken to the mayor about this, our committee is hoping to bring forward a presentation that does include this separation, um, but also some other options that we, the commission can consider. Uh, and, and based on that data alone, you all need to be warned how hard this will be to bring pilot relief. Now, let me just throw out some of the things that we're talking about, but again, we're hoping to bring a full presentation. Um, and we're hoping to have our data be correct. Within a separation of residential from commercial, we also hope to learn further. Can we create classes within the residential? And that is a question that our legal department is working on finding an answer for right now because that's different than just separating residential from commercial. Can we further differentiate within the residential class by income, age, what have you? Um, because what the mayor and frankly, I and probably everyone on the dais seeks is relief, especially for those most vulnerable, for those for whom it is the most difficult to pay this payment in lieu of taxes on your utility bill. So I will, I will openly and honestly say we seek to benefit that group first and foremost. And the question is, can we do that within the law, the state law?
Yes, Commissioner Bynum, I, I believe we can. Um, I think it's maybe just a discussion with BPU as to what can they administratively handle and I defer to them on
Thank you for that because there's, that's a whole lot of other, I was, I was actually, um, visiting with the mayor about this. visiting with the mayor about this today because anything we do is going to create a series of administrative actions and work for people to do to create these separations, et cetera. So I don't want to get ahead of my committee. In fact, Mr. Deickler, I don't know, or Ms. Sparks, I don't know if BPU Board Member Rose Henry is online and also Dr. Evelyn Hill. Because, Mayor, with your permission, I would, I would really want to also afford each of them some time for comment, if that's okay. Thank you.
Commissioner, they are both online.
Okay, great.
Clerk, you can invite them.
Ms. Henry, your mic is active.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to this for a little bit. I think we started meeting in November, but perhaps, I think it was November, Commissioner Bynum, keep me honest there, to look at these very issues. And obviously, we at BPU are are sensitive to these pilot discussions as well. And, you know, we're fully supportive to try to help this commission make informed decisions based on, you know, the the work and the input that the Unified Government Staff has had into this, as well as the legal department, in addition to BPU staff. And so we we hope we get an opportunity to finish this work and and give a full presentation to the commission with some recommendations. So hopefully, we'll be able to get a chance to do that. Thank you all.
Dr. Hill, your mic is active.
Thank you to our mayor and our commissioners and Commissioner Bynum. Thank you for including me as a part of the community, to be a part of your committee. We have been in meeting with you, as others have already said. And it has been encouraging to me that we're actually looking at ways to help us here in the community decrease this pilot pact. So I I do look forward to us completing this work and moving forward. I will say this, though, I am in favor of separating the residential and the commercial pilot tax, as was on the agenda. I am in favor of that. And a couple of other things, the cap is at twelve percent, which I would say is good. But it's at eleven point nine, and that's already too high. So the twelve percent is great. But it would be better not to increase it at all, but to decrease it for the sake of the most vulnerable and the rest of the community members. So I don't want to be long-winded, but I just want to say thank you for allowing me to be a part of this committee. And we want to represent our community well. And thank you to our Commissioners and the mayor. Thank you.
Mayor, we do have three people here that signed up to speak on this as well. You can call them.
Our first speaker is Louise Lynch, Shear Mank, on deck.
Louise Lynch, Kansas City, Kansas. What I want to say is, yes, we need to separate that right away off of our bills. It is ridiculous and people getting disconnected because they can't afford these pilot bills and that we have no control over. But there are other fees on there as well, like the customer access fee, which can go up and above what the pilot does. We wind up paying in fees almost fifty to sixty percent more than our usage. Those of us that are struggling, that are poor, that have other medical conditions that take up all of our finances and then some, don't have a pot to pee in, let alone to pay these bills and risk not having life-saving electricity because of that, or having BPU turn off our water, which should be totally off the wall. That's ridiculous. Water is a human right. To continue month after month begging BPU, begging their customer service for help is ridiculous. This pilot should have been separated and taken off long time ago. I agree. Take, separate it now. Get it off our bill now so we can pay our electricity. But don't stop there. We need to get rid of it totally. We cannot afford it. There are elderly and handicapped and medically people with large family. I mean, there's so much need in this community that this is really ridiculous to have us come up here month after month and beg. I came in September and spoke about this BPU issue. I asked about protecting the people from the cold. Well, my family was one of them that was victimized by this cold and couldn't afford.
Your time has expired.
Take it off now. Enough. ARPA gave zero funds to the Cantillon Aging to help the seniors who can't pay for these bills, and you all gave them zero. Shame on you.
Our next speaker is Tashir Mank. Susan Stevens on deck.
Tashir Mank, the BPU did receive COVID and ARPA funds. I don't think that the people actually heard this young man here, who said that our charter for this pilot fee was already overdue. I think I speak for all the working people in Wyandotte County, the ones who actually have to earn an income and actually have to pick up a second job to pay this bill. Hell, no. Take it off our bill, period. We don't want it separated from anything but our bill along with a twenty-two dollar electric access charge and a twenty-one dollar water access charge. That right there is almost a hundred dollars, depending on how much usage for that pilot fee. While you're checking on those state regulations, let's check on the FEC's regulations for that pilot fee to be put on our bill. Let's, let's talk about that. Because I'm tired. I got at least a hundred and fifty people. I got at least a hundred and fifty people's bills who, for this month and the month of December, went to double. I had at least a hundred people whose bills was almost a thousand dollars. Now, understand, I understand that we pay this man over here three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars to rob us anyway. Take off all of the extra charges. Because at least a hundred dollars of those charges are just fees. How in the hell are y'all going to charge us for access to BPU? And that's the only company we got. Not one access charge, but two. And Mr. Garner, please consider giving us an extra minute. And that is irritating with her. One minute left. One minute left. That is irritating. I'm sorry. And I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but it takes away from our time of speaking and trying to come across to this board and let them know how we feel.
Our last speaker is Susan Stevens.
Hello, I'm Susan Stevens, forty-eighteen Silver Avenue, Argentine neighborhood, member of Community Conscious Action Network. Thank Mayor Garner for bringing this item to the agenda, Commissioner Bynum, and everyone for working on it. I'm just really excited about, and I agree with the others who who also said, we don't, we need to not stop here. We need to really, really alleviate the burden on the poor. And I want to speak, and because I know one thing I'm hearing from people, sometimes they're like, well, then that means services have to be cut because how are, how are we going to cover the needed taxes? And I really want to urge for us, moving forward, every, every business that we want to bring on board to do business here, like developers, everything, we should only bring in people who were really gung-ho about, they want to put back in this community. They want to pay full taxes. They don't want any free rides. They want to, you know, the novelist Stephen King, he wrote this article a while back, "I'm Rich." Tax me. And, you know, I mean, that's the kind of people we want doing business. You're people invested into this community, and when they're getting rich, they they want to pay, they want to put back into it. They want to, they want to pay all the taxes. They want to, you know. So I'm just, I'm just saying, we've got, a- and if they decide, well, we're going to go to somebody who'll give us better breaks, more free rides, so we don't have to, so we can gut communities and not pour back into it, then maybe we can start going back into our small businesses that we used to have. I moved here to Argentine four years ago. And what I heard is that there used to be just tons and tons of businesses up and down Strong Avenue, that there was like a laundromat a few blocks from my house, I think. And it is really good for my health personally to walk a mile to the nearest grocery store. I I'm finding that very beneficial for me personally. And I walk a mile and a half to the laundromat. Okay, one minute?
Time has actually expired.
Oh, okay. Well, anyway, it's not that easy for everyone. It'd be good to have more local, even smaller grocery stores closer. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Evening, morning, whatever sign you want to be on today. I am going to talk about the definition of payment in lieu of taxes. It is for nonprofit entities, payment in lieu of taxes or amounts paid to a state or a local government in place of taxes. Most commonly, property taxes at issue, at at issues are the vast amount of land owned by universities, hospitals, and churches. You guys are taxing us twice. Okay, you just raised our taxes on our property. Okay? We had a discussion about houses in our elderly
One minute.
that once they go up over three hundred and fifty thousand, that they will not be covered. I don't know if you guys are really listening to us. All I keep hearing you, Ms. Bynum, is talking about the thirty-one, thirty-one million dollars and one million dollars. No, that pilot tax should not be on our utilities. There is no other entity that's doing this. And you're talking about building the economy? Within our state, people are moving out of Wyandotte County because they cannot afford tax, the the utilities. They cannot afford the taxes, the property taxes. Our area first district looks like a desert, literally, where it had, I don't know how many small businesses. So as a small business, would I want to come here? No. Because my utilities is going to kill business. But I keep giving all these bonds out to these large corporations.
Ma'am, your time has expired.
So we have to work that out. And I'm asking you guys, please, please remove this from our utilities. Thank you.
Now, could you state your name for the record as well?
Lisa Walker Yeager.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
We the people.
Sir, if you could state your name for the record as well?
Good evening. My name is Thomas Gordon. I'm a resident of Wyandotte County and have been here for more than seventy years. I just have a general question. I attended a BPU meeting not long ago, and we asked the BPU representatives what was their purpose. They stated that their purpose was to deliver quality, energy, and water services. I asked the Commissioners now, how can they be designated to be collectors of taxes? That is a question. There is no charter. There's no reason for the BPU to be collecting taxes. That is not part of their duties. That is not part of their charter, and it deems to be out of order. That needs to be corrected. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else before I close the public conference that would like to speak about BPU, specific to BPU? Pilot.
Mya Joe. Mya Joe. Look, this will happen to me. Just to see how y'all ripping me off, I decided when I leave my home, I'll cut the main, main electric switch off to lower my bills. All right, they came out, switched over my meter. Okay, so then a month later, they come and redo it, re-switch it again. Now, this is only because I'm lowering it. They noticing that they ain't squeezing no money out of me. So then the third time, I get a note saying that if I don't be there for them to come and look into my house to see what's going on, that they was going to cut off my BPU. I came to the BPU meeting, I said, hey, look, I'm explaining what I'm saying right now. I cut my main switch off because I want to see how I can minimize my bill. Y'all trying to see how y'all can mitigate that device to squeeze more money out of it, because y'all ain't getting no money out of me. And that's just what, oh, will we see somebody out and see what's going on? No, what you want to do is come and tweak some more stuff on something so y'all can raise it up back to where y'all think I should be paying. And that's a, and that's a ripoff. And number one, trash. I put one little bag of trash, and y'all ripping me off for like sixteen dollars a month. Older people eat less. So what y'all need to do, y'all need to lower the trash prices on elderly people. And you know, to get one bag a week, a trash, and any in full. Because I eat out. I don't eat out. But anyway.
Hey, thank you. Thank you for all those comments. The only comment I have is that I know, Commissioner Kane, you had a question about the necessity. Commissioner Bynum and her task force are working diligently. This is really just a precursor to their work. Commissioner Bynum's task force was tasked with looking at the financials. This separates business from residential to at least allow for this commission and for Commissioner Bynum's task force to do the hard work and have those debates on which, if any, to lower rates independent from each other. And this allows for that. If not this year, at least sometime down the line, and you could do it more responsibly as opposed to having them all combined, which would be even more of a a tax hit. Again, one of the things that I asked Ms. Bynum and her task force to look at was those most in need in our community, which are those that are impoverished. I don't think any of us like paying our BPU bill, but there are some that are blessed to be able to pay our BPU bill along with our pilot. But there are a lot of poor people in this town that are struggling to make ends meet. And when you look at the average of what a pilot represents nationally, the average is five point five percent. Here, the equivalent of that of ours is eleven point nine percent. And so I know that it was raised, I believe in two thousand nine, I may y'all a little bit, with some level of commitment that it would be lowered again, and that has not happened. The Unified Government has maintained it at its current level. So I'm glad that we are having this conversation because people, especially those most in need and are poor in this community, they're getting cut off, not because of the utilities that they utilize, but because of the utilities and that tax, because that's what it is. And that's just real talk. And so I'm trying to find a solution to that. I think this is the first step. It doesn't commit the Unified Government, correct me if I'm wrong, council, to anything other than having this option when it comes to the budgetary considerations, to have that option to be able to do it responsibly.
That's correct, Mayor. It just means in the next budget cycle that you would have options in terms of the rates. It just means in the next budget cycle that you would have options in terms of the rates.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to close the public comment. And are there any further comments or discussions from our commission in regards to this matter? Commissioner Stites?
Stites District Seven. Mayor, what was, you said five point nine was the national or?
It's about five point five. It's the national average. Regular utility companies call it a franchise fee. The equivalent is we have a pilot.
And we're currently at eleven nine? Is that, that correct? And you're saying that back some time ago, obviously prior to me, I wasn't here, I've been here a year, that it was, it was raised with the expectations that it was going to be reduced. Do you, do we have any information as to why it was raised? And what was the thought process behind that it would, what would, what would make it come back down?
That's a good question. President, General Manager of the BPU is here. If you can weigh in on that, that would really be great. And we're glad to have him here. And thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mayor. I didn't bring anything with me, obviously, to speak to this, but I can certainly go off of, off of memory. So in two thousand nine, the unified government was going through some budget issues, problems. And you guys, I think revenue had gone down, expenses were up. So you were, you were struggling with revenue losses and trying to get a budget passed at that time. So both the BPU elected body and the unified government elected body at that time came together here in this chamber. And there was a conversation that took place on raising the pilot from nine point nine percent at that time. I think it went up to thirteen point eight percent. Maybe not at one time, maybe it may have been a one or two-step process, but it did go up to thirteen point eight percent with the promise to take it back down to nine point nine. So it went from thirteen point eight down to eleven point nine. And it has been at that level ever since that time. I don't have the years in front of me, but I mean, it, it's kind of the process we went through. And it was our understanding, in fact, this has been a conversation with our board of directors, that their anticipation, at least some of them, remember that and were on the board at that time, that met with the commission and remember exactly what was promised by the unified government commission at that time. Unfortunately, it's never happened. And Mayor is right, the national average for American public power is about five point five percent. That varies, you know, slightly over time, but that is about where the current average is. These are dollars, tax dollars that are levied against utility revenues and people in this room and the people that are listening are paying for it. Any other questions?
Well, I, I appreciate it. And I honestly, I didn't mean to put you on the spot here tonight. I know you were not prepared. But here's my problem with it. The shortcomings of this unified government's budget shouldn't automatically defer to the taxpayers to make up that gap. And, and we have, we, we've went from, if, if that five point five, if I'm doing my math right, to eleven point nine, that's, that's, that's six percent to a total of, if, if one percent was a million dollars, roughly, that's six million dollars. So I, I, that, that's where I have the problem. It never came back down. What have we been doing to get it back down? So people can afford to live here and pay their taxes and pay their bills. I'm in, I'm, I'm in favor of not only getting it down to a manageable number, but total elimination of the pilot. And with that, with that, with that, we have to also recognize that we're going to have to make some hard decisions with that revenue loss as how we make up our, a balanced budget. So we got some homework ahead of us. But I think it's long overdue that we provide some sort of tax relief. And this pilot is a good start. Thank you.
Commissioner, I would, I would leave you with this. I've been at BPU for over forty years. And over that course of time, BPU has had to make many, many tough decisions on making sure that we become more efficient, we streamline our operations, we've lowered our costs, we've deferred raising rates, we've done a number of things to make sure that, that we didn't drop our service to the community. But we operated at a more efficient, more efficient as a publicly owned utility. I think, I think you're right, looking in the right direction. And I think that there's some room to maybe build in more efficiency here. Thank you.
Thank you, General Manager. Appreciate you. Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, I'm still sorry to do this to you, Mr. Johnson, but I do have some questions for you. I'm so sorry. So, yeah, 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 could, could, could come through. So we talked about the pilot, right? Or this kind of service fee. There's also, right, the other large parts of the BPU bill, which is really electricity, right?
Right.
The pilot itself is a kind of a tax on or a percentage of the entire bill. But if you look at the bulk of the bill, right, we're really talking about electricity. How do you all measure, right, electric use?
So there's two components to, well, there's two components to the energy use. One is by how many kilowatts you use over an hour period of time, and that's kilowatt hours. And that's mainly for residential customers, for commercial and large customers. There is a demand component to that too. So within a thirty-minute block window, depending on how much you use there, you may get, you'll get charged a demand charge on top of that. There's two riders that's on our bill. One is called the environmental surcharge and the other one is a fuel and purchase power charge. BPU generation, all the power that we generate is sent to the market. The SPP market, I'm not sure if it's a Southwest Power Pool market.
Yeah.
It comprises like fourteen, sixteen states. All did all their generation into that market. And the, the sign behind that concept is SPP would deliver the lowest price back to every community that it serves. So they're, they are operating by running the cheapest generation first. As load goes up, they'll add more and more load. But it's a lot more efficient and less expensive to be operating that way as opposed to every utility trying to generate to its own load. So the other part, that's, that's the purchase power piece. The other part is there's been a lot of federal regulation on closing down power plants. You know, utilities have kind of supported that to the best of our abilities, but we haven't gone as fast as some citizens have wanted or as fast as the federal government. Because I think we all want to get to a place where we're a hundred percent renewable, but it's going to take time. And coal generation for this region is still one of the cheapest sources of power. And it also provides reliability beyond what renewables can provide all by themselves. So because of that, we had to spend two hundred and fifty million dollars on our nearby power plant just to keep it operational. And to pay those bonds back, there was a rider placed on the bill to have to go back and pay for the, for the debt that the federal government placed upon this utility.
Gotcha. So I guess I'm, I'm hinting at this because we're talking about kind of comparing our rates and how the pilot is much higher. As far as what we charge for electricity, how do we compare to our peers, Power and Light and others?
So we are very competitive with Kansas City, well, with Everging, Kansas City Power and Light and West Star, before they merged and after the merger. We're also very competitive with independents. I think there was a graph on our website that kind of shows how we compare with all of our, all of our competitors in the region. On the water side, we're, we're also competitive there too. I'm not sure if the water graph is there. I think it is, but, but I don't want to, I don't want to have you looking for something I'm not certain about.
No, and I would love if you can have your staff send me that information. The, the, the other thing I will ask is, so for the public, just so you all know, we actually do receive audits or a budget from you all. And we kind of look at your performance and I kind of pay attention when I have time, right?
Right.
You all had a pretty good year. It's, I don't, when it comes to your revenue versus expenses, would that be fair?
Well, we, we have recovered from COVID. You know, there were, there were a time where we had to work with all customer classes and defer revenue, push it farther out, not giving our, a lot of customers more time to pay. I mean, there was a time also that we allowed some of the state programs to, to kick in and start helping for rental and utility assistance from the state. So we put in, I think, three or four moratoriums over almost a year's time if you add them all up. And where we didn't disconnect, we allowed the, the public to be able to help get back on their own feet during the pandemic. And the BPU was there helping and also providing utility assistance along the way too.
Yeah, yeah. I guess the only reason why I'm bringing that up is because I saw, and I don't know if this is correct or not, but it was like a thirty plus or thirty million plus revenue, right? More than your expenses. It was pretty, I, I don't know if that's accurate. I'm kind of throwing numbers out there. But those are numbers that we dreamed to have here at the unified government to see, right, our revenues much higher. And so I just wanted us to kind of be aware as we're having these conversations about the pilot that BPU is doing very, very well, right? And if we're going to have questions about.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't go that far.
Better than unified government. And if we are going to have questions about the pilot, which I would absolutely be in favor of, I also think maybe we can gather the board members and talk about water and electric rates. Thank you so much, Mr. Johnson. The last thing I will say on this is I know that the bulk of the rates is residential centered. However, there are other folks who probably would have an opinion on this. I'm thinking about nonprofit organizations, I'm thinking about churches, thinking about schools. I just wonder how, what engagement we should do with them to say to them, your rate stays the same, but to residents it changes. I, I don't have any opinion on that particular matter, but I do think it would behoove us to engage those folks as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Davis, one last thing. I'd be happy to meet with you, have a conversation of what we call contribution to the community and where the unified government sits in that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Markley.
Thanks, Mayor. Is this item for action? I mean, I think if a, if a motion is needed, my motion would be for Commissioner Bynum's committee to continue their work to include the comments and discussion that we had tonight and to bring us back recommendations as we move closer to budget time.
Okay, we have a motion for this to proceed forward. We do that. Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you, Mayor. Is there any idea at this point when that committee may be through with its work to make a presentation that takes into account a lot of the, just the basic questions about what the pilot is, how we got there and bring back not only this recommendation, but any others and to who these cuts may apply to. And more importantly, what the financial impact is going to be to our budget. Someone has already made mention that we're going to have to grit our teeth to do this. And we've heard tonight that people want trash picked up. They're talking about code enforcement. So that means we will have less money. But if that's the will of the people, that's fine. But my point is we need to do this in an environment and at a time when we understand everything that that's going to mean. So I would support the motion to go back, come back. And I forgot to ask again, Commissioner, when you think your committee will be concluded with their work? Mayor, with permission. Okay.
Commissioner Kane?
Thank you, Mayor. What I'd like to do is when the next citizen we put out, have an explanation of the pilot with that. And, and the reason I say that, and, and then when we have these meetings, have somebody out here, put it up on the, the chart right here of the wall and say, here's what the, sorry Chuck, the, what, here's what the pilot is and here's where the, the expenses are going. You know, so everyone on the screen can see, here's what's happening. But I absolutely think that we need to put this in the citizen. And if it takes the, the bulk of the citizens, that's fine. But to explain what the pilot is, how it got started, there was a fine in the middle of all that. You know, so this did, this, this didn't just happen in the last couple of years. This has been an ongoing thing ever since I've been here. So it's certainly that we need to explain to the public what happened, why it happened and what our next move is. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Bynum?
Thanks, Mayor. We had hoped in March without a definitive date, but we have a work session to work on our presentation and our recommendations and sometime in March, because again, we're trying to get ahead of the budget cycle and bring it to the full commission for exactly this kind of discussion. So a date in March that, again, I've been talking with the mayor about could be a special session or, you know, part of a, a regular meeting that's already on the agenda. But that's the best I can do right now. Is March.
Commissioner Burrows?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Commissioner, I think it's a worthy cause to, to continue to pursue what we can do about the pilot. I guess I, I want to make sure I fully understand that the residential pilot is what we've been discussing. And this resolution this evening was to separate the two out. So are we going to have that included in the research work that goes in? Because I believe the six million dollars that you referred to, Commissioner Stites, referred only residential. It didn't refer to commercial. And I think there, there's some, maybe some confusion there. So I'd hope that whatever action we take that we're understanding of exactly what we're doing and what part of the budget will be affected by what entity. So I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on all of that. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. I would just ask, Commissioner Bynum, you have a task force, and I know you all are doing the brunt of the work, and it's a good relationship to have those stakeholders. That, because this is a complex issue I'm hearing and a lot of questions from our commissioners, once you get your work done, if we can forward that to standing committee to have it vetted even further before it comes back to full commission. That's just an ask on my part. I think that would allow for a lot more clarity and for staff to, to spend a lot more time on this. So when it does get to this body, the commissioners will have the information, need to make an informed decision at that time, especially as we go through the budget cycle. There is a motion and a second for it to proceed. Commissioner Markley?
I was just going to clarify following Commissioner Burrows' comments that I do intend for that committee to both look at the separation of the pilot as discussed tonight and the amount of the pilot and all related issues.
Okay, Commissioner Townsend, you concur with that? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Clerk Rokel?
Thank you, Rokel. Burrows?
Aye.
Townsend?
Aye.
McKeonan?
Aye.
Ramirez?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Markley?
Aye.
Stites? Davis?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
What is ten to zero that motion carries?
Thank you, clerk. That takes us to our regular consent agenda. Do any members of the Commissioner County Administrator wish us to set aside any item on the regular consent agenda? If an item is not set aside, all items on the regular consent agenda will be voted on by one vote. I will entertain a motion for approval of the regular consent agenda.
Davis moves to approve.
Markley second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion?
Just to clarify, who's, who actually got in first on the second?
Whoever you pick.
I'll put both, thank you. Roll call. Burrows?
Aye.
Townsend?
Aye.
McKeonan?
Aye.
Ramirez?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Markley?
Aye.
Stites?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
What is ten to zero that motion carries?
Okay, we have no further business tonight with this governing body. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mayor. Commissioner Burrows? Davis second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? Yes, I'm sorry. Commissioner Townsend, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we adjourn presumably, I did want to set the record straight from some comments made in the public comment. Just so folks know, I have been a member of the Land Bank since twenty thirty-
I have been a member of the Land Bank since twenty thirteen, but I hold no other power beyond any of the other four commissioners I serve with. I'm not running anything other than that. You are open to come to our meetings and understand what the processes are. We endeavor to serve everyone in the community equally. So I wanted to make that clear as well. Thank you, Mayor. Also, lest somebody think that you can only put out one bag of trash or trash is unlimited of the amount of refuse. So thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to clear that.
Okay, we're motion and a second. Rokel. Please.
Rokel, Burrows. Townsend.
Hi.
McKeonan.
Hi.
Ramirez.
Hi.
Johnson. Kane.
Hi.
Markley.
Hi.
Stites. Davis.
Hi.
Bynum.
Hi.
Motion's ten to zero.
Thank you all. We adjourn. Have a good evening.